In that case, at this point, we will call the September Board Meeting for the Board of Education, for the Unified School District of Antigone to order, and we would ask that everyone please rise for the pleasure.
I would like to testify to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bobby, roll call, please.
Tim Fuller?
Here.
Tara Gislo?
Here.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Jensen?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Present.
Jessica Mead?
Here.
James Schultz?
Present.
Mike Bolding?
Here.
Thank you, Bobby. At this point, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the agenda as published. Let's move. We have a motion from Ms. Long, second by Mr. Mary, to approve the agenda as published. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. And before we get into the next portion of business, I'd like to welcome our two newest members from Board of Education. Our student representatives this year will be Brennan Brown, Mr. Brown, and the alternate will be Mr. Ryan McCarthy. And Ryan served with us last year, so welcome back, Ryan, and welcome, Brennan. And next time around, we'll get you up here, get you set at the big table with the adults. Thank you, guys, for your volunteering and part of it. To set the agenda, we'd be looking at item B, then approval of various items.
Just put the approval of the agenda, you already did that.
We did that, and we're covered.
But, Bobby, you got the rest of the documents.
Yeah, we'll be looking for approval in minutes, et cetera.
I'm going to board approve the agenda for tonight's committee. August 25th, regular board meeting, the financial report for August 2015, and payments of bills through checks 4737 to 4894, and 1516000109 through 15160019, in the total amount of $1,606,525.1.
Second. We have a motion from Mr. Mary, second from Mr. Fuller, that the Board approve the agenda as earlier stated, minutes of August 25th, regular board meeting, financial report for August 2015, and payment of bills through checks number 4737 through 4894, and 1516000109 through 151600199, in the total amount of $1,606,525.1 and one cent. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, both, please.
Tara Gislo?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Jensen?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
James Schultz?
Yes.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
And Mike Bolding?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And we will go on to item three, citizens delegations. Kim, we're going to be Sukkaya. Okay, and I see we have approximately seven individuals who'd like to speak strictly on one issue tonight, so I would ask if you have, rather than everyone speaking, if you would have, like, a spokesman or two who would like to speak on behalf of the group? Or do you feel it's necessary that you all individually just vote?
Would they get more than five minutes, then?
Well, I think we have any more than one. We've had different points, as some of us have right now.
Wait, why don't we let them each have their time, and if the last person thinks it's all been said, he...
Okay, that's fair, that's fair. Right, first up, and then I'll be needing my partner.
Do they stand or do they...
If you want to stand up there, you want to stand over here, whatever, whatever is going, like...
First, I guess I would ask that, my understanding is that the graduation date of the Sunday before the last day of school is board policy. Is that true?
There is no board policy on graduation date at all.
There's a document at the, at your office, sir, that says that.
I'm not aware of any such document, but it's not a policy. I would love to say it, yes, but there is no policy.
I'm telling you what I say it says, okay? See that highlighted in yellow? It says Board...
Yeah, it has the district calendar.
Right, but I don't know if it's policy or not, but seeing that document that sits at your office says that. Because if it is policy, you can't vote on that tonight. It's got to go through two revisions, that's the number one point on the board.
Board policy does not state anything about the graduation date, I assure you that, I don't know who's...
Okay.
So...
All right, I guess the other thing...
Would you read that, exactly what it said?
It said, "Board, Board Policy states that graduation date is the Sunday before the last day of school." My sister graduated 27 years ago, and for the last 27 years, it's been that date, right, wrong, or different. There are reasons in the paper, whether it's true or not, on the radio ad, that teachers support this. I don't, I know a lot of teachers that don't support it. They said that it would make it easier for the teachers to plan their curriculum. Why wouldn't they have brought this up for the last 27 years, if that fact is true? Second of all, the survey that was done, why can't the public, the people who did the survey, get the results? This whole thing, it smells like a fish, it swims like a fish, and it smells bad. It's been done very sneakily, and I got to tell you, as a board, if, if some, I sit on four boards, two corporate and two not-for-profit, if someone that worked for me pulled a stunt, like whoever has pulled this, because I don't think it's the board doing this, I would walk them out the door tomorrow. Because I think they may do look bad in the eyes of the public, at least the people who have children that are going to be graduating. Another point I'd like to make, the lock-in has been reserved for that Sunday night. Has anyone checked with North Star, a business, if they can do Friday night? In Antigone, any restaurant and bar, their best two nights are Friday and Saturday. Now, we're going to ask North Star to completely shut down on a Friday night, one of their best nights? I don't think that's fair, especially if no one's asked them now for this upcoming year. People have plans. We've planned already. Because it's been this way forever, we made plans, I know many other people that have plans. They've got family coming in. This is going to mess up people's plans this year. The community relations and communication, what, again, I don't know if it's your job to show us the results, but like I said, I have a lot of people telling me, you know, when, why can't we get a hold of these survey results? So, that's all I wanted to say, I guess.
Okay, people, thanks, Bobby. Next up, Tom Koss.
If I may, I, one thing that may have, like, kind of changed how things are planned would be the newer block days on every single week, and the eight-hour days, which is a change from the past 27 years. But even with that, I didn't even hear about this possibly being, the graduation date possibly being changed, until about halfway through this afternoon. And the people I've talked to since then, the other seniors, they aren't too happy about it, and they think it's going to be a huge waste of time with everyone involved. And then moving on to North Star, as it recently switched hands, I think it would be very advisable to get in touch with the new owners and the manager, to see if the lock-in would still be a possibility for the new business.
Patty, Becky, if you don't mind?
I'm called up.
I'm sorry. Has anybody contacted you? Can you answer his question?
Nobody. No, nobody, this is our time, nobody has contacted us.
Okay. Thank you. Right, thank you. Tom, please, sorry.
I'm Tom Koss, and I'm in a unique position because my son would be affected if, in fact, you do it on that Friday. Colin has qualified for state competition in three sports last year, and finds out doing it this year, and we'll see. But his schedule is full, he gets up at 4:30 in the morning, goes swimming, then he goes to school, then he goes to cross-country, and this time of year, track in the spring. Then he does his schoolwork about 8:30 or 9:00, he passes out, gets up the next day, he does it again, so he's an honor student, state competitor in three sports, and he would have to choose between his graduation year or the track he did lacrosse. So, it's a tough spot, and I know it only affects a few people. Last year, we were down there, and there were three competitors, but there were a dozen parents and students, students come down and support their classmates, and three coaches from the school. So, again, a very small number of people affected, but it happens to be my family, so I wanted to come here and let you know that. Thank you.
Next up, Sarah Boydwitch.
And Sarah Boydwitch, I just wanted to speak because I was very concerned when I heard about the date being changed. My first question was, was why? You know, has there been a problem? Has this class been a disciplinary issue? Is there a reason why these children need to stay at school for four more days? I know my daughter certainly hasn't done anything to earn four more days of school. She's looking to move on to college, she's done her very best. The idea of going to school all day, going to graduation that night, and going to a lock-in, does not seem like a fun last day of school to me. I can't imagine anyone enjoying that. When I thought there were several kids at the house last night talking, or working on a project for homecoming, and when I had talked to them, there were a dozen, they had no idea that this was going on. And I'd only heard about it from a friend who found out about it, that this was coming to the board, really kind of haphazard. And that's the kind of thing that builds mistrust. And I really believe in this annual prize that you're trying to build, this is a time to build relationships, build trust, build this in the community, especially at a time when, you know, we're trying to get the school consolidation, buildings, those kind of things. And what I've learned with owning a business is, you've got to keep your customers happy. You know, you need to build the customers that you have now, because those are the people that are spreading the word through the community, for those people who don't have children, whose children are gone, who don't have a, you know, piece in the pot. If you don't have the customers that you have happy, good luck with the rest of them. So, when you have that mistrust, of, you know, I had to find out about this being presented to the board, kind of, luckily, it was upsetting that this could come to the board and be half, and be passed with no knowledge to parents and children, seemed very deceptive, not by you. You know, you're only just given the information that you're given. But it seemed very slippery and upsetting to parents and students both. So, that's what I wanted, wanted to say, that I just really felt that, had this looked by us parents and children, that in itself was dicey and upsetting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Next up, John Zankovich. What else in that room?
Well, I'm John Zankovich, and I'm also one of the families that hopefully will be affected in the spring, because my daughter also fell by the state traffic, and I have a graduating senior also. I wrote a letter, I don't know how many of the board members had an opportunity to look at it, and I emailed it to you, so I'll elaborate everything in there. And it seems kind of out of order, since we don't know what the presentation from the principal's going to be, and the reasons he's going to give us for why he chose, you know, is requesting that the Board select to move it. But one thing that no one's addressed, that I'd like to bring up, is family, because I'm not from here, my family's not from here, but the entire family, I had to travel to the graduation, and having it on that Friday would make it possible for any of my family to come to my daughter's graduation. And that's kind of important, family's very important to me. And I know that that would, a lot of people have all their family around here, but many of us don't. And by taking it that Friday, especially a Friday which is already a short week, since Memorial Day would be off, it really affects the ability for us to get our family together so that we can celebrate our children's graduation. And for us, that's, that's very important. And so, like I said, I find that this is in the wrong order, and I understand the purpose of the agenda, and I know that you're not going to allow revolts or anything, but I'd like the stuff that was in my letter to be considered by the members of the Board that took the opportunity or the time for it, so I thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, thank you, Zankovich.
Actually, pretty much what I was going to say about the lady...
He's already said?
Yep.
Anything else?
The only thing, my only concern is, I don't understand the reasoning why this is even an issue. So, that is, same as John said, I'm kind of waiting to see the justification before we can even present any kind of argument, and it is kind of difficult.
Thank you. Next up, Kathy Love.
I think pretty much everything I was going to say, people have, who are instead. One point is, you know, the North Star thing, you know, it is, I am owner of North Star, and giving up a Friday night's a lot different than giving up a Sunday night, I will say that. And Antigone Pride, this makes me a little sad that I have to come to this. I called the school to get the results of the survey, and was told, or I emailed, that they weren't being made public. I guess I don't understand why they wouldn't be made public. You know, we hear Antigone Pride, wear your Antigone Pride every Monday, Antigone Pride, you know what? I'm not feeling a lot of Antigone Pride right now, sitting in this room, is all I have to say.
Okay, well, thank you, Kathy. Next up, Heidi Lucas.
Hello, everyone, I'm Heidi Lucas, I'm actually a parent of four children, and I, our family will also be concerned about this graduation, and we have our, listen, our oldest who will be graduating this year. And then, also, I'm a current teacher for the Antigone School District. And anyway, I guess my question is why? And again, that's everybody's, why is it happening now? And I know in the paper, it said something about that maybe this had something to do with staff concerns or whatever, and I'm not a high school teacher, but I am a teacher, and I know that the teachers do so much, you know, for their students and such, and they show up to so many different events and such that aren't in our contract, or, you know, whatever, I mean, and I, I go to, like, everything, you know, at elementary level and such, and it's just great to see the kids. So, I don't know how many, you know, high school teachers do go to the graduation type of thing, but that really doesn't matter, it's just the fact that I don't see how that's a problem, that they themselves have a problem with this. But I guess, there's one thing, everybody kind of said what I was going to say anyway, but there is one other thing that I kind of want to bring up, is religion. There's graduation masses that happen before, I'm Catholic, doesn't matter what you are, but anyway, I know Peace Luther has a big graduation mass ceremony too, and I just feel that, you know, all their hard work, all the seniors' hard work, is, it's just like this fast-paced thing, fast-paced, you know, decision to just, you know, just cut it, just make it short, boom, it's done, move on at summertime, and let's get the next batch of kids in here. So, but I guess my perspective too is, you know, what's going to happen to the graduation masses too? Because that is a very important part, it is for our family, a very, very important part, you know, of that, they grew up with their churches and all the events and such that they're involved in. So, I guess I ask of you, that in a time that we are taking religion out of everything, do we need to also take this away too? Thank you.
Thank you. And we have one last speaker who is not asking to speak on graduation, but wants to talk about facilities, Mr. Nabukul.
I don't want to talk too soon, because I don't want to take away from our points. I'd like to say that I was pretty disappointed with the cafe last week, for the simple reason that we had said when we started this, that all options, if people walked forward, would be, and we would wean this down a certain way. Now, I think that we have to take any option, whether it's a good idea or a bad idea, we have to give it its moment, run it a board, and the board then justifies whether it's a good one to move forward, or says, "We don't like this," and heads it out the door. If, if you don't like something, then you wrote it down. Then, at least when we get closer to referendums and down the road here, when somebody says, "What about this?", then we'll be able to say, "We looked at it, we didn't like it," and that's our opinion. So, after the recall meeting, you guys have made it pretty clear, certain items you didn't want, and other areas were kind of a gray area. Problem was, that there were options that did not negate it, because they were in that gray area. So, I had that, the option 11 was the one. And you guys know, I've got it to you at the very beginning of this process, we've now had two of the public meetings, and we were going to zip it out for the board. So, I also have been watching real closely, and you guys have been feeling and going, and constantly twiddling on that option, okay? So, here we go again, I brought Zach 3.0, okay, which is the one that discussed with pretty much everybody over the last week, this is the one that I was, when I got along with the, at the forum, it was a lot. So, and I really do believe that the Board has to, for this next forum, have every option that has not been negated, is there for the people to see. You can't have psychopaths, or somewhere on the different website, somebody's talking about, it's almost true. And I don't care if it's a stinker or not, because I, when I started, two options ago, I've changed a lot, I really don't like them when I started them, but the point is, you still have to negate it for the people who did like it. This is, SIS policy is the same belief, is we need to keep the rural presence, material and festival, it keeps that, and farm and American power, then there are close, festival and plus. You're going to close out of town schools, I really think you got to close in-town schools. So, we address that here also. That was the difference between what we're showing with that 3B option last week, in-town school status. This, I've also looked at trying to keep into what I think people want, and try to go with dollars. If we spend a lot of money on one of the in-town schools, it is virtually the new school. We put a huge addition on, we do whatever, then it gives people that in-town that wanted that, something without the $23 million. We put a little effort into two old-time schools, that should keep everyone comfortable. So, I adjust this with your grade configurations, and I hope like all heck, this is there on Thursday night. I also hope you guys do something to where you actually say, you're going to vote each one off. Thank you for your time.
Thank everyone for your comments, and yes, we do listen. Please take that in heart, we're going to do our best here. That moves us on to new business. Item A, the Policy Committee Report, so Mr. Fuller, you do it.
Okay, we had a meeting of the Policy Committee on September 8th, called order at 7 o'clock. Committee members present were myself, Jeanne Long, Andy Mary, and Tara Gislo. Other board members present were Mike Bolding, Jessica Mead. Administrators' presence, Don Childs, Tim Fronte, Brian Missfeldt, Jake Leinerman. And there were no public comments in our meeting. The committee forwarded the following policies to the Board of Education for the first reading. First one was 166, Members Electronic Communications. Chance to read over it. Any questions? Okay, then that's good to go over the first, first reading. And then, the next reading was Policy 751.5, the use of private vehicles to transport students. That had a few issues entailed with it, because of, parents take kids, take multiple kids to different, for hockey or basketball and stuff, so...
And students too?
So, okay, I guess we're, do we want to understand it, and agree with it, for first reading? Okay, and then, then we'll go on, we have three policies that are up for, for the second reading tonight. First one is Policy Modifications, 342.6. Questions from anyone on that? Okay, then that one's good for the second reading. Then we have 342.8, 504. Any issues on that one? Okay, and then the other one we have for second reading tonight is 665, fraud prevention. Okay, everyone good on that for second reading? Okay, and then I'll, I move the Board to policies 342.6, Individual Modification of Student Program of Instructions, 342.8, Section 504 Plans, and 665, fraud prevention.
We have a second. Motion by Mr. Fuller, second by Ms. Gislo, to approve Policies 342.6, 342.8, and 665. Any discussion? I think it should be noted, Tim, that these are policies that, from the policy review done by WASB Legal Services, that we, we'd be efficient on not having?
Right, these are new policies.
Any other discussion? Hearing, yes, Chief.
Policy 751.5, the private vehicles to transport students, but that's not what's on the...
We've got a motion on the floor.
Yeah, okay.
That was the first reading, that one will be...
Any discussion on the motions that are, policies that are within the motion?
Well, I noted that on what I had to hear, 342.6, the schools are not filled in on this version.
Yep, they will be. Correct?
I'm sorry.
The version that we are looking at online does not list the...
The actual schools.
The actual schools.
That's interesting, because I had actually put the schools in there, so it should be there.
The version we have does not have them.
I apologize, yes, the schools will be inserted. And what I would suggest we do is hold that in advance, depending on the corrections. Either that, or make the motion contingent upon directing three.
As we do make the motion contingent upon having the schools entered in there.
I would rather see the schools listed. That's fine, whatever the Board wants. Want to amend the motion, Tim?
I'll amend the motion, we'll take that policy.
Take 342.6, out, and that will be presented at the next meeting. Then, the amended motion is going to be that the Board approve Policies 342.8 and 665, and 342.6 will be moved to the next meeting, pending the corrections.
Yes.
Okay? Any further discussion? Hearing none, Bobby, roll call, both, please.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Jensen?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
James Schultz?
Yes.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
Tara Gislo?
Yes.
And Mike Bolding?
Yes.
Okay, and the next Policy Committee meeting will be on Wednesday, October 14th, in the IMC, and the meeting was adjourned, we're going to have to send it at 7:25.
All right, thank you, Tim.
I would like to hear his concern for...
Yeah.
I have concerns about, like, with homecoming coming up, and...
I have concerns about, like with homecoming coming up and students driving to schools for homecoming, like football players mentoring students, which is a great idea, but is there, I mean, according to the policy, you can't, the students can't drive themselves, right?
That basically is correct, because the school activities, that's correct.
Do we need to put that in?
But are we able, is that legal to change that? I mean, would that still adhere to the law? If we changed it and made a caveat for something like homecoming, can we, can we do that without violating the law? This is what I'm saying.
I think we have to console counsel on it. I would be loathe to change it until we get some guidance, because this is directly from School Board Association's legal counsel, and I'd like to console our own board.
Yeah, so I agree, I think it is too strict, but if that's what we get.
Then again, this is a policy that is only in for the first reading, is due to be going to the two committees.
We can bring it back to the second reading.
For modification at the second reading, so it can be discussed at the meeting level at that time and then presented to the board. In that case, we will move on to item four B in Relations Communications Committee. Mr. Schultz?
Guess I got a couple here that got took on in August, did we do August last meeting or not?
You didn't have.
We discussed something about it at the third reading, but anyway, August twenty-fourth meeting was held at the Antigo High School Media Tech Room, which we are now in right now. Called order at six thirty PM by myself. Committee members present were myself, Patrick McKenna, Jessica Mead, and Scott Jinsma. Other board members present were Mike Bolding and Andy Mary. Administrators present, Donald Childs, District Administrator Tim Fronti, Director of Business Services, Anita Maddick, Associate Principal, and Jake Leiderman, Supervisor of Billings and Browns. Other present were some community members. There was no one to volunteer for public comment, and on committee members' reports on community linkages, outreaches, Scott Jinsma shared that he has made contact with the town of Rolling and attended the last city council meeting. He plans to return and continue informing these groups while the board makes the way through the facilities' planning process. Jessica Mead has distributed poster flowers for the forum at various locations. The committee discussed the traffic flow at the fair booth that was put together for the School Board in the PBIS Committee, which turned out very well. The committee discussed having a table at the farmer's market, and Patrick McKenna offered to organize this activity. Andy Mary shared an idea that each board member be assigned to district school. The committee agreed to make these assignments as follows. Patrick McKenna, Spring Valley, Mike Bolding High School, Scott Jinsma of Pleasantview, Jessica Mead of Mattoon, Jeanie Long, North Elementary, Andy Mary, West Elementary, James Schultz, Crestwood, Tara Gezal, Middle School, and Tim Fuller, East Elementary. Principals of each school will be responsible for making contact with their board representative, and the board representative should attend events such as open houses, first day of school, Christmas programs, et cetera. And many of us did that first day of school. PBIS report, Committee Report, Anita Maddick informed the committee of the upcoming school events. The events include elementary open houses and a spaghetti dinner at the Elks. Anita also showed that the Antigo PBIS Committee was invited to present to a state PBIS conference earlier this month. She said that with five minutes and twenty slides, the presentation was wherever presented it, and Anita will share the video with the committee so that it can be used at various events. Discussion on the open forum from eight fifteen fifteenth, the committee agreed that the attendees on eight fifteen were receptive to the many options presented, and the evening generated conversation amongst board members, Myron Bray consultants, and committee members. Mike Bolding shared that one of the concerns from the committee members on the focus on facilities may be too great, and that we should also be focusing on education by getting the staff and faculty involved at a greater level. The objective in the next few weeks will be to delimit some of the concepts based on the feedback received. The next meeting, Committee Meeting, was scheduled for September sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen, at six thirty PM at Spring Valley Elementary School in Bryant. Meeting was adjourned at seven thirty PM. And the September sixteenth Committee Meeting?
James?
Yes?
Can I comment on this one?
Go ahead.
There's only two farmer's hoppers.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments on that one? Community Relations Communications Committee Meeting of September sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen, was held at Spring Valley, trying to beat the winter rush there from driving out that far at night. Meeting was called order at six thirty-five by myself. Committee members present was myself, Patrick McKenna, Jessica Mead, and Scott Jinsma. Other board members present was Mike Bolding. Administrators present was Tim Fronti, Director of Business Services, Heather McCann, Middle School Principal, and Jeff Newfield, Spring Valley Principal. And there were other community members present as well. Public comment, Clark Palmer shared that he was disappointed with what he perceived to be a lack of organization at the open forum the prior evening. He questioned why the board has eliminated so many of the conceptual ideas that were presented for consolidation. He felt that by limiting those concepts without further public discussion, the board has gone against the commitment for open lines of communication and transfers with the public. Tom Zatluka shared his concerns regarding the elimination of so many concepts at the discussion matter at the open forum as well, and Mr. Zatluka stressed the importance of saving old billings and eliminating the idea of building new billings. Tim Fronti said he feels that Antigo needs to be competitive with every other community that is possible, that Antigo taxpayers can afford to build new schools. And he also, I think he mentioned that we can afford to, we should, we can afford to do whatever it takes to bring up the best possible education that we have that compete with every other school district in the state as far as educational needs are concerned. And he says the public education, probably needs to be educated in order to cast an educated vote. Jessica Mead shared that we need to work with parents and non-parents, informing them of all the concepts presented. Committee members report on community linkages. Scott Jinsma said that he will be attending another town of Rolling meeting and in the town of Ainsworth. Other committee members are attending school PTO meetings and open houses. Dr. Childs is scheduled to meet with the Optimist Club and Antigo Elks Club. At each of these.
Rotary Club.
Rotary Club. Is that?
That'll be first.
That'll be first. Is that in addition to these two, or is that?
Well, the Antigo is not, the Elks Club, or it means not the Elks, but I'll be at Rotary Thursday and the Optimist on the sixth.
Be determined, sir. You still have that spaghetti dinner coming up, though, aren't you?
They do, yeah.
At each of these meetings, he will be sharing what the Board of Education is doing with facilities' planning. He will also be available for questions. And I personally have contacted Senator Tiffany's office and Mary Chia's office, our state representative, and part about anything that they could help us with on planning and different things like that. In particular, what to do with any school buildings that could be closed or if you consider closed, be closing, and what kind of help they had. And I had a response from the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, Christine Berry, who is, actually resides in White Lake. She works out of the state office, and she had contacted me about that and different things that they would have to do, feasibility studies. This could be for any building that we'd be closing or vacating, not just middle school, but also any elementary schools. Some kind of feasibility report to what we could do to convert them into something else in the in the community. Members of the board also attended the first day of school in each of the districts. That was quite interesting. Our PBIS Committee Report, Heather McCann informed the committee of the upcoming school events. Events include the following. Antigo Pride Display in downtown Antigo, they are putting up in one of the vacant buildings, the in-windos displays there. I think it's a former Java club or something like that. They're doing events at the Hundred Mile Club with the Hundred Mile Club. Cansstruction, Cans for Hunger, which anybody's showed up to the game Friday night that you brought cans to the game, you got a discount on your ticket. Homecoming Parade, have events, possible, I guess, for the homecoming game parade. Christmas Parade, they're planning PBIS event for that. Tier Two Training with Teachers, and that's a spaghetti dinner ten five fifteen, that's at the Elks Lodge, correct? And then possible partnerships with local gas company or gas station to raise money for PBS. I don't think it was a gas station, some other kind of gas, feeding on gas, I think. But this is, they're looking at this, and so there's no names being given at it. But right now, they're discussing the possibility of a cent or two for everything, for every gallon they purchase to be donated to the partnership in the school district. And then the Web, which is the Weekend Backpack Program. Did I get that right, Heather?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, discussion on the open forum from nine fifteen fifteen. The committee discussed the open forum that took place the previous evening. Different feedback from the people that were present and from board members. And the board members, we pretty much agreed that we're kind of disappointed in the way that it turned out, how it's been coming out a little bit without, we were not aware of the discussion that there were, from further, we covered only six concepts. We didn't, we weren't aware of what those concepts would be, and so we thought there had to be some kind of change on that, some kind of direction on that. And with that, I'd like to propose a motion in that regard that the Steering Committee be reorganized effective immediately. In addition to the administration and Myron Bray, that the full Board of the USDA become the primary component of the Steering Committee and be present in all Steering Committee discussions. That's, I'm presenting that and have that, the duration of that Steering Committee until we make such a decision to, but we don't need a Steering Committee anymore. Present that as a motion to the Board.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Schultz, second from Ms. Long, in regards to a Steering Committee for the facilities part. Correct?
That's correct. Specifically that the Board be present at the Steering Committee and be part of the Steering Committee.
Motion, second, discussion.
Well, I'm gonna, I'll start off the discussion, and I think that so far we've seen, and the feedback from the community, we're asking us, you know, who brought these concepts together? Where'd these concepts come from? And getting the information like an hour beforehand is not giving us any time to prepare or consider what's going on, and we're not involved in the discussion that's being presented to the committee, I mean, to the community. We're going out in these World Cafes, we're supposed to be representing different things like that, and they're kind of being like, oh, this is, kind of being surprised by it. So I think that with the Steering Committee being made completely with with administration and with Myron Bray and the School Board, then we could have more of an open discussion, and we could ask specifically questions of Myron Bray in their level of expertise. We can get the administration and different levels of administration, not just the current members of the Steering Committee, but also principals from all the different various schools. One of the things when Jeff Newfield, he brought us in, and Heather McCann at the Spring Valley Committee Meeting, they made some comments that, you know, say, okay, we're not aware of these things, you know, and these things, these types of issues that they deal with on their little, in their little billings, need to be brought out and discussed, and so we can incorporate them into our planning with the with the billings. So I think I'd like to, that's kind of my basis for bringing this out, that we are all involved in this discussion and get the feedback back and forth and set up some kind of pride parameters and criteria that we can apply to every single billing concept, and so that it's not just, you know, it's too expensive, it's too old, or it's too this, or it's too that. No, if it's too expensive, why is it too expensive? Let's cash some numbers, let's get some numbers. If it's too old, or it's not fit to be, you know, let's find out why. Let's not just label something with generalities, let's really find out the details and apply, do we have resolutions for them, or are they too expensive, really too expensive, or should we just abandon that type, you know? Is there other solutions, you know? A continual discussion is what I'm looking for, you know, that we can really, as a board, with Myron Bray, with the administration present at the same time.
And I feel it was brought on currently, because when we got to these forums and stuff, so many options that we had discussed as a board, when they came to the forums and stuff like that, they, parts of them were there, but parts of them were taken out. You know, they were there partially in concept. So we just need, as a board, need to make sure that when these options, like for this forum Thursday night, that we know what the options are and what each one states. And it also can take some extra work on our part, but I feel that's very important to the public. We want to keep the public informed on all of it.
And we have people coming up to us and asking us questions, and we just don't know the answers. I mean, we can give this stuff here that, like Jim said, we got, as we walked into the meeting, we were handed this packet, and we didn't even have time to go over it. And, I mean, the only people we really see at the World Cafe are the cafes, our staff, two community members, and a lot of people from Mattoon. And I think that Mattoon is sticking out, and they need to be heard.
Does it, Jim, I agree with the idea that we need better communication and we need a clearer process for that. Is it gonna, I mean, some of the, I guess I don't need to see every single idea. Are there some ideas that we can just eliminate, kind of based on community feedback and kind of impracticality, or is that not the case?
Well, I think that's what our job would be, and I think the Steering Committee would facilitate a lot better. One of the tables that I sat at had Spring Valley as the lone public rural school, and the very first question that was asked is, how far is that from Mattoon? And, well, they didn't even know, and I said, well, okay, I kind of have an idea. And I said, about eighteen miles, it's crow flies, you gotta drive it, it's probably closer to twenty-two, and he put his GPS today as twenty-three, so, you know, this was, this is something that could have been eliminated, and I feel, you know, I have paid classes that I go to on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and so, you know, I'm taking out time for the School Board. I mean, I want it to be, I want it to count, okay? And I've, I'm glad to be here and do that, but I'm not happy about coming up on something that's cold like that, and that kind of was a waste of my time, because he could have just looked at this and said, nobody's gonna go for busting kids from Mattoon to Spring Valley. I mean, that's kind of, should have been dead on its face.
Just one, Tom.
Sure?
That is, that is exactly what transpired after the last committee and the whole meeting. You just had consensus around the fact that nobody was gonna go for the idea that we could close all the rural schools or all the city schools, or put sixth grade at the high school. And so the consequence of your consensus was for us to eliminate those options, and you knew that we had eliminated those options, so I suspect that perhaps you didn't realize the number of options that that would reduce the packet to, but it brought it down to the six that came with the World Cafe.
And I don't know if this is the right time to talk about it now, or when we get to actually the facilities update or further down, but I feel like, I want to say this without sounding too angry about it, but I feel like no matter what, we're not gonna make most people happy. And I agree with Dr. Childs that at our committee of the whole meeting, we did exactly what what Tom and I believe Terry are saying that we did not do. We made a conscious effort to say, here are the parameters that we want, here's the setup that we want. We did not take a formal vote, and I don't think that we're required to. I, the Board as a whole said, these are the ideas that we want, so keep the concepts that are within this realm. So I mean, I agree that, I agree with with Jim that we need more communication, and I don't like getting this stuff, you know, right when we have the meetings, say, okay, this is what we're supposed to be working with, but I feel like our name as a board is being tarnished, saying that we're not being open with the community when we when we are. So that that just kind of frustrated me when I, when I got that, those comments from from the two people in the community, so.
Well, yeah, exactly. So all three people, that is not. It's nothing. I mean, I'm not saying it's nothing to hear from those people, but I'm saying it's nothing in the realm of the whole community. And I feel like the only point that I would like to agree on is the getting the information just before the meeting, before the forums, before the World Cafe. But other than that, I mean, Jim was kind of contradicting ourselves, because we're saying we need to narrow it down, but let's open it back up.
We did narrow it down. I have my notes, we went over those things.
And I agree, we, those three concepts were, but there are a lot more concepts out there that have not even been presented to the public yet.
Because they don't need to.
They were eliminated by.
No, I don't agree with that. I don't agree with that. This, yes, what we discussed on Committee of the Hall, those three, yes, but there's a lot of others that don't fall into those parameters that that have not been presented in the community in a forum yet.
Jim?
And so, and really, what I want is just to make the Steering Committee, the Board part of the Steering Committee, that when these discussions are going on, we know what they are. We're putting our input into them as a whole, we're getting feedback immediately from Myron Bray, from the administration, and other administrators, administrators also, and that we're up to speed with it before we go into these forums.
That's a, that's a very reasonable point.
Andy? You have your other one, then Scott.
Um, I'm not sure I have a thought there. But I do have plenty, plenty of thoughts, so if I lost that, I'd say, oh, well, it was mine.
No, but I think, at the start, the first thing I want to say is, you know, the board has agreed to a system of board governance here, and we set policy, and we do community relations, and, you know, administration, you're talking about coming in and getting more micromanagement here, and that's fine, there's a lot of things I would like to micromanage. Um, and, you know, I'd be happy to go back to the old form of the board, where we had an operations committee, and we sat around and discussed lots of things. Um, there's been some things that have come and gone here that I thought we should have been involved with, but that's not what this board has agreed to, we've agreed to board governance. I shouldn't say we have, it's just here when I got on the board.
This is not operations, though, this is just, this is something that is planning.
This is planning, we pay the administrator good money to do some planning, guys.
We should be involved in planning on this, this is what the board should be doing. According to Wisconsin statutes, this is our responsibility.
Yes, the thing, thing, I guess, I don't think, like, all the board knows should not, can't be present this and that, but I think it would be important to have at these meetings, if they can make it, for some board members to be there, if they can, they can make it to some of these meetings. Not that the whole board's there, you know, that this is all, I don't think, like, I don't know how, how you're gonna figure there. For the full board, that ain't gonna happen, and the full board shouldn't be there for that, but I think there should be multiple board members there, involved in it, if they can make these meetings, you know, to have their input. That's where I think the meeting.
No. Scott?
So, Jim, I just want to address something you brought up, I mean, we have eliminated concepts, and Tom, I may be picking, you know, a little bit here, but we eliminated some concepts, and we're, we're getting new concepts. I think there has to be a line where we have all the concepts, we can handle, here's what we're gonna give the public, and we gotta start systematically with Myron and Bray, with us, start narrowing some of these down, maybe we do some of that tonight, we have some dollar figures finally, which I've personally been waiting for, to help me, you know, and help us move forward, because I think that's, at the end of the day, that's, might be the most decisive factor we have to overcome.
So, we do have a motion on the floor for, Jim, would you please read the statements that you have.
My motion is that the steering committee be reorganized effectively immediately in addition to the administration and Myron Bray, that has been declared part of the steering committee, that the full board of the USDA become the primary component of the steering committee, be present in all steering committee discussions. And by full board, that means if there's just five that show up, that's sufficient, you know, like any other function. So, if that, if everybody can make it, then five is okay.
You do understand that creates a public meeting, and you have to have it someplace where it's open to the public, and you have to publish it, and all the folks notice it, do all of those things. So, you no longer have effectively what you call the steering committee, which is not what we are, but that's okay.
What if we appointed three members of the board to do this, there would not be a forum? Or even if we took turns doing it?
That's probably a good idea.
Have we, everybody would have this information, if we took turns?
Have we what?
Everybody would have, would be on board, at least have some knowledge of what we're talking about, if we took turns.
We could have voting, why?
Yeah.
That anybody, that.
We would have one-third of the knowledge.
That if.
Pardon me?
We would have one-third of the knowledge.
Yes, exactly.
It's not dangerous.
No, it's not, you have all the knowledge that we have, so there.
Just not when we want it.
Well, you know, yes, but some of it revolves around timeframe, that we're operating under year two, and when you need to be making decisions, and that's not going to change. What we can do is see to it that those meetings, that our minutes are prepared at the meeting and then forward to immediately, so you know what the discussion process is about, but it does take some time and format and prepare the, the options. So, and, and I would point out to you that much of what you have at the table tonight, not all, admittedly, is material information you've already had since the very beginning, which is, well, thirteen of the options, and there are multiple permutations that bring them up to about thirty-one options. And you have at the table tonight, those that were presented at the World Cafe, and I think there are two additions to that, a three E, which aligns very closely with what Mr. Zabilla shared with you, and I think one hundred and one. So, and that should be part of your discussion.
I just want to say that Scott said somewhere there we ought to draw a line on how many options we have. I do not believe we should do that until we pick one, that's going on the record on this, because I think this is an evolving process, just like Tom has said, he's evolved his option, I think we need to keep evolving the option for an option.
But I think that also needs, just using better terminology, because I think we're talking about, like, we eliminated concepts, and we didn't really, we said that everything was still on the table, but at some point we have to narrow it down, and then when you narrow it down and you talk to the community about it, you get more feedback about, well, this one is out, we don't want to ship our kids all the way from Mattoon to Spring Valley or vice versa. So, fine, that's not wasted time, that's finding out, that is not a concept that will fly. So, revamping what we do have, taking the concepts that we did like and things about them, and making new ones, such as we have tonight, are progress in going forward.
I agree, but I still think we need to be, the board needs to be part of the steering committee, wherever this committee's, wherever Myron Bray is meeting with the administration, we need somebody to be there from the board, whether it make it a four, a voting, a voting committee, that whoever shows up, whoever can show up, whoever wants to show up, can show up.
Can I just ask, is there anything preventing us from being there now, other than if five of us showed up, we'd have a forum?
No.
And can't we just be notified in the meeting to show up?
If you're going to show up, you really need to notify me that you intend to, so you don't wind up with five people sitting there. That's all.
Well, then let's make it, well, if we do it this way, then we don't have to worry about it, we can.
Just make it open. Exactly.
Because if we have an open meeting, we have an open forum.
We have to have an agenda. Facilities discussion.
Exactly.
I don't think five would make it anyhow, so.
It's true.
Like, a lot of times, not limited during the day, correct?
I think that's what should happen, and in that way it remains open anyway.
I think a few board members need to be there, you know, you know, to be involved. I don't necessarily know if we need to have five there.
There's no.
I guess a couple should be there.
Tim?
Well, are you, are you redoing your motion?
To, uh, if we, if we make it as a full board, then whoever shows up, shows up, it's, you make the o- the open thing, this opens, you have to be posted anyway, so then we don't have to worry about a forum. And if there's no forum there, there's no, there's no, it's, it's a committee meeting anyway, there's nothing, no action that can be taken that's decisive, it has to come to the full board anyway.
Jim, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I think my, my comment is, and, and Jim, I certainly understand where you're coming from, and, you know, organizations can always do better with communication, but I caution the board to move forward with a vehicle that is wholly unwieldy, trying to coordinate, we're, we're trying to coordinate the Bray schedule, Myron's schedule, the administrative schedule, and at some point we'll be bringing in, I would think, staff into the discussion, and other administrators into the discussion. And I just caution you that that gets to be both a scheduling and a communications problem, and, um, I, I'm in agreement that maybe you want to have it open to a locating committee or board representation, that's fine, but to have five members of the board trying to move forward in a timely manner, that would be very difficult to do, to get schedules aligned so we can even conduct the vehicles.
Maybe we need to slow down, but otherwise, there's telephone, open telephones, there's, we've had meetings with other school perceptions on Skype, all kinds of different issues that we, communication devices we have, to, without Myron Bray even being here, they can be at the meeting.
If we schedule these as open board meetings and five members do not show up, can that meeting take place?
No.
Not legally.
Now we're wasting time.
Well, not as a school.
But it's scheduled as a, as a school board meeting.
If it's scheduled as a school board meeting, and if you don't have proper form, it cannot be legal.
So, even if people that are there, that Myron Bray don't know, nothing can be, they can't meet at all?
Well, you can discuss something, but there's nothing.
I don't.
Yeah, you can.
But if I'm sitting there and it's scheduled as.
On a committee meeting?
It has to be in a agenda.
If we have a committee meeting at, and run the rural schools, and only two board members show up?
That's a committee meeting.
Well, that's when I, this is what, this is a steering committee. I'm just saying that the whole board be part of it.
But, yeah, even a committee meeting, if you didn't have a forum, I think that's only.
You have a forum.
So, are you, going back, are you going to withdraw or change your motion?
So, the committee meeting with, with Mike Golding is present, he's there as a.
I'm ex-officio member of all committees, I don't have any voting rights. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm.
The only thing I caution you about is that the group, which is not a steering committee and is misnamed as a steering committee and is never intended to be a steering committee, is nothing more than a group that is put together for purposes of developing information to bring to the board, so the board can deliberate on the information and make decisions about it. And the minute you bring board members to the table to be part of that, instead of an informational meeting, it becomes a planning meeting, and I think that's a very different thing, and then it's not happening with the transparency that you, as a board, agreed you wanted.
How is that? I mean, that's, this is the discussion we're having, it's because we don't think there's transparency now with how these things are coming, where they're being developed, who's bringing them forward.
Well, I think it's very clear, and we put them out for you with thirty-one different options, and we showed you how, I mean, Myron and Bray sat here and walked you through all thirty-one of them at a meeting very recently, and then at your last committee of the whole meeting, you agreed that you wanted to eliminate a number of those, and you did, a large number of them. That doesn't mean that those are the only ones that are possible or that are out there, but you've had all that information, it was brought to you to the table for you to deliberate over. It's not an easy, clean, and neat process, and I understand that, but it's because of the nature of what you're doing and also the timeframe in which you're attempting to do it. If you really want to go, or think you want to go to referendum in April, you need to have this narrowed down to a manageable group of options by the end of next month. You need to have the survey done by school perceptions before Thanksgiving. You need to have the feedback from that and the options to deliberate it over so that you can make a decision in December. And I can assure you that by putting the board in the position of doing what in fact you hired Myron and Bray and are paying us to do, is going to monumentally compound the process and extend it, perhaps interminably, if we ever get to referendum.
I don't know if we hired Myron and Bray to, to form all the concepts, I think there are plenty of, of people that have been living in this district for a number of years that have different concepts and configurations that they would like to see brought forward that have not been brought forward.
Well, I, I would beg to differ, we went back.
No, I don't, I do not, you can beg to differ, but I am talking to Jim.
We went back to nineteen ninety-five with plans for facilities that took every single option this district has ever had in front of it, or a board of education has had in front of it, and put it together, and that was the original presentation that Myron Bray gave. Those were options that have been in this community for twenty years, and so it is not true that Myron Bray came up with, or that we came up with these ideas. Those are options, concepts, if you will, that have been deliberated, some of which have been submitted to the electors and defeated, but we brought them anyway, some of which we knew were probably not very realistic, like, let's do nothing. We brought that too. You went through your process, rightly so, and eliminated a number of them, but these are not ideas and suggestions that somehow we magically came up with in secret, behind closed doors, to which you were not part of. I'm sorry. That's the implication of what you're saying, Mr. Schultz, it is flat-out untrue. I apologize, but that's true.
What about, you know, what about, like you said, if we have it so, that if a couple board members want to be at these meetings, if we can have them so they're available, that there's a notification that they know the meeting's happening, that they can be there, you know, without, without the full board, you know, with the full board, they're, that complicates things, I understand that, I agree with that.
Jim? Yeah. A couple board members are able to go to those meetings, we're all able to go to those meetings.
Yeah, well, it can be open to everybody.
We should all get the same information.
Right, it should be sent out to everybody.
If I call and ask for some piece of information, that should be in everybody's packet.
Right, yes, so I agree, it should be to everybody, but you know, with, with schedules and stuff like that, I can't foresee one of the meetings where everybody from the board is gonna show up. But I'm saying if a couple are available and want to go to these meetings, I feel they should be able to. That's all, you know, that's, right, I don't, like I said, with Jim, I do it different, I don't think the full board, everyone should get the pack, everyone should get the information and when the meetings are, okay? And if a couple people have the time and are willing to go and listen and input a little bit, you know, with stuff, so, that's just my opinion.
I, I agree with that.
Tom, we have one quick one, please.
Yeah. I think that according to, we had all the options, not, direction Jim is going, but if you just, all these options are there, if you physically say, we don't like this one, and vote it out, then you have the communication back to the committee, and then put that option in. You want to vote out my option, tell me why, and do it. I think that's a quick one, please.
Thank you.
And that should be your public deliberation at the meetings, that's fair.
We really can't do that until Thursday, after Thursday, we need to have this open forum. And I want to say again, if you guys, Drew and Lisa, you know, please help us, if we can get more people to come to these meetings, that's what we want, we're not trying to be shady or hold things back, we just need to get it on the table, and we have to make the best decision for the entire school.
I'm gonna call with a question.
Thank you.
The motion is on the floor, by Mr. Schultz, seconded by Ms. Long, regarding facilities planning, Jim, would you please read it one more time since you have it?
Yes, I move that the steering committee be organized effectively immediately in addition to the administration, Myron Bray, on the committee that the full board of the USDA become primary component of the steering committee or planning committee, and be present at steering committee discussions.
Bobby, roll call vote. Second, who seconded it?
No, it was already seconded, Jim, restating the motion for purposes of clarification.
Scott Jensen?
No.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
No.
Jessica Mead?
No.
James Schultz?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
No.
Derek Isle?
No.
Tim Fuller?
No.
Mike Golding?
No.
Vote is two in favor of the motion, seven against, the motion is defeated.
And conclusion of the, of my committee report is, our next committee meeting is scheduled for October twenty-first, two thousand fifteen, at six thirty PM at Mattoon Elementary School, and that's in Mattoon, not Bryant. And meeting was adjourned by unanimous consent at eight fifteen PM. Thank you.
Yep. Bobby, would you please have that corrected?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Uh, we are going to go on to item five, staff and update, team that is not here, and it appears that we have one open.
Yes.
Javier, which is a certified occupational therapy assistant for the.
Javier, which is a certified occupational therapy assistant for the district, and we are still waiting for that position to be filled.
Yes, that is correct. Everything else in the way of certified agencies at this point is to be filled.
Good deal.
Just except for four K.
Oh, we have a part five four K, that's true, yeah.
And, uh, quick one, Tom.
I have one question on that. How many long-term subs do we have in the district?
That's a good question, and I'd have to ask Tina, and she's not here.
Cindy sold that.
Right now.
Three long-term subs?
Currently.
Two or three. We have a couple of staff members out on medical leave.
Are those, uh, long-term subs just for staff members who are out on medical leave?
Long-term, yeah.
Or do we have long-term subs on, for teachers that we were on either.
Not this year, we did last year.
Oh, yes, we have one, one elementary teacher that, um, cannot find qualified applicant for, so that is a long-term sub.
Thank you.
We had two last year.
Then we'll go to youth options, Tom.
Sent just tentative numbers for the spring applicants. I don't have the dollar on my front of me, it's a small number of students, and we, uh, the deadline is October first, so we're just providing you with what we have right now, and we'll have those final numbers. I think before we go on to board action, we've all been kind of sitting here for a while, and if you don't mind, we're going to take a couple of minutes to just take a little breather here and then come back, and then we'll kick it into, uh, item six for board action and keep this thing going on. Thank you very much. Mission twenty sixteen. So, um, I think we like to see the proposal first rather than sticking the motion out there.
So, Tom, sure, if you'd start.
All right, I put it, set up the computer here because I anticipated, um, interest on this topic, and I will talk about many of the things that were, were questioned or brought up as to why, and, um, and hopefully you're, you're more informed about this idea. So, what I did is I prepared a proposal for the school board, and I just provide, first of all, some background. And, um, in two thousand, the legislature set a start date as September first or after for all school districts in the state of Wisconsin. That was, came about and was lobbied for by the tourism industry and the state. So, um, when that went into effect, that pushed the end of the school year into late first week in June, second week in June, okay? At that time, our traditional graduation date was on Memorial Weekend, Sunday. So, we realized that, um, our seniors are getting out in some cases a week and a half or more at the end of the school year. And so then we made an adjustment to the date for graduation, decided it will now be the Sunday before the last day of school. And that's what it's been now probably for about ten years. Okay? So, recently, in two thousand and thirteen, the legislature made another change where in the past, districts had to follow a number of school days per year. It was a hundred and eighty days. We were operating on a five-year, five-day waiver, so we had a hundred and seventy-five day calendar. That was approved by the board as a cost savings, less busing. So, in two thousand and thirteen, the legislature did away with that, and we are still, our, um, our requirement is to meet instructional hours. So as we sat down and developed the calendar last spring, we were able to, I guess, condense the school year a little bit. We eliminated one of the October convention days or vacation days, and we made some other adjustments. So when we looked at the end of the year, we realized that we're ending in that first week in June on a Friday, and the other significant thing was that we made that Friday a half day of school. So, in my discussion with other principals, other schools, other high schools, I believe D C Everest and Wausau East, scheduled their graduation ceremony on the last day with students. So, looking at our calendar, is this something that we should consider and, um, and evaluate? Here are some points that kind of support the idea where we would have a common end date to the year, which would provide a common final exam schedule. Right now, we have a final exam schedule, an informal one for seniors, before the rest of the students finish, and then we have our official final exam schedule for the rest of the kids after the seniors are gone. So, the benefit of having all the students here through the end of the very last day would allow us to have one final exam schedule. The number, the second item there talks about mixed grades. If you're a sophomore or a junior and you're in an elective class with seniors, the, the final's already been given. You may be in that class three or four days, and, um, you know, the, the, the end of the year is basically finished for that class because the final has already been given. So, that would be one advantage to you, be lining up the last day of school, the final exam for all students. I mentioned the half day on the third, and, which would provide some options on scheduling the practice, and I'll, I'll get to that. Um, the additional days would provide some additional time for seniors that are, that are a little behind, or maybe need some extra time to redo some assignments so that they're eligible to graduate. The fifth item there, um, it is true, I did not call North Star, I did have a conversation with Karen Higginis and talked with her about the lock-in, and, um, her opinion was the, she has had, struggled with volunteers on a Sunday night. Um, she said a Friday might work better, people might find that easier to volunteer because the next day is Saturday. So, I thought I would put that in there. I think it's important to, to know, though, that this is not a proposal to have graduation on a Friday night. What other high schools are doing, it, it could be a Tuesday night, it could be a Wednesday night. It all depends on when the last day of school is scheduled in the calendar. So, um, it would, it would float during that last week of school. Here's what the schedule, here's what the last two weeks might look like. We would move the awards scholarship ceremony up a week on a Wednesday night instead of having everything on that last week. So we'd have it on Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, and then Friday, the last day, school would be out at midday. We'd have practice from twelve-thirty to two-thirty, and the ceremony would be scheduled at seven, and this year, the lock-in would be following that. Here are some, uh, survey results. We sent out a survey, we received a hundred and twenty-three results, it was through a school, an email, sent it out, um, and, um.
This was not part of the survey that we had done last spring?
No, separate. So, shows you how many of those that responded have a senior in school this year, sixty-three percent. Um, I like the proposed schedule. Uh, fifty-six percent compared to forty-three percent. Were the results there. So, there was questions about the schedule. So, there, the next question included all the different options. So, looking back on Memorial Weekend, if you had it on Friday night at seven P M., or Saturday at two P M. on Memorial Weekend, or whether it is scheduled right now, it's scheduled for Sunday, May twenty-ninth at two P M., or the new proposal, Friday, June third. Now, um, that option received the highest percentage, but not, not a majority, but what's interesting to me is that that was selected as the, the, the highest percentage of responses for that question, but kind of conflicts with the one above where people said they did not like the schedule, or a majority did not.
When you divide that weekend by three, Tom, that's easy to do, dividing a cocker. I mean, it doesn't take mathematicians.
Why don't you divide it by three?
Guys, guys.
You guys got a press invitation?
Mike, please.
Okay, I got it, I got it, I'm sorry.
So, I put all those on there because maybe there are other options that people might want for graduation. And is the Memorial Weekend an issue for people or not? Some people prefer it, some people don't. So, I'm going to page through these, these are, um, some people put their names on their comments, I'd rather not, but pros and cons throughout the, um, list of comments. So, you know, as I look at the survey, there is not an overwhelming support for moving the graduation date, but, um, when we made the change about ten years ago, it was pretty seamless. I thought it also might be helpful for, for people to see the, um, past, last day of class for seniors and then their graduation day. So you can see that graduation has been the last tail end, few days in May, sometimes it's been June sixth, June first. It's kind of floated around, and, uh, if it, if it were to be on the Friday, the third, um, you can see that in the past several years, it's either been before, or even, you know, three days after that, so.
I think it's scheduled for right now.
It's scheduled right now for Sunday, May twenty-ninth of Memorial Weekend.
Tom, can I ask just a question on that?
Sure.
So, you have last day of school there, is that the last day of school for just the seniors or the whole student?
Seniors.
So that's not for the student conference?
No.
Just for the seniors?
Yeah, because, uh, some of the responses said, you know, seniors have that privilege, or they should be in the day of school. So it's just showing you the last day for seniors on the proposal. So, my, uh, this is not a sneaky conspiracy to move the graduation date. I, my purpose for preparing this and submitting it to the central office and then now to the board is, is it something we should be talking about with the change to, shoot, instructional hours? And, um, looking at the holiday weekend, do people want options on that? Is it something that, um, we bring back, um, maybe consider for the following year? There is no, no, uh, plan to, to push this through or ramrod it through. So I think it's just something, it's a valid issue with some of the changes in, in the legislature and how the school year is. Yes?
Me?
Yeah.
Um, my question is, perhaps you should redo the survey and speak to the point that it's not always going to be a Friday night, it's not always going to be a Thursday, you know? The survey should be, it's going to always be the last day of school, because I have a feeling a lot of the parents don't understand that this might be a Wednesday night, this might be a Tuesday, this might be a Thursday, and in my opinion, graduation is a celebration of what the students have accomplished. If you have a Tuesday night graduation, who's going to be there to celebrate with their, with their students? So the survey needs to be presented so that the parents and the community are aware if you're going to be approaching a potential graduation.
Amanda, you had your hand up first.
I believe the first time I specifically spoke with you in person was when we were here registering our kids. The second time was at Meet the Robins. Then I have several files that I have sent to you, Naomi, Janet, Anita, and finally, I contacted Dr. Child's office by an email and by phone calls. Actually, the first one was by phone call. At no time was I ever told that this was going to the board, and I don't know at what point you have to get it on the agenda, how far in advance, but there was no attempt made to say, Amanda, this is something that I'm going to present to the board on this day. I actually found out kind of by a foot, and then I spread the word. So I apologize if I caused a lot of commotion, but ask these people sitting here, they would have known if I hadn't voiced that and spoken out and sent out an email to these friends of mine. Nobody knew. I contacted a board member by phone the week before, and they were unaware. Now, I don't know when that agenda actually officially was posted, but it was not on the website on Thursday, Friday, or Saturday of this week when I checked. I was told today, when I was at the district office, that it's supposed to be available on Thursday, Friday, or two. I'm, I'm not sure when the board got it. I am not in an uproar over the board right now. I'm in an uproar over the process that has taken place, the lack of communication with the senior parents. We were first received this July twenty-first in a newsletter. I can tell you the majority of the parents left that newsletter aside because they were swamped. Then it came via email to some of us on the twenty-seventh of July. I'm sorry, but I have an older son getting married. There are family situations that are set in motion well beyond a year, so we need that communication to happen sooner.
Mike, go ahead.
I guess, Tom, you had said other schools, other, kind of weekdays, I've got, uh, dates here of ten schools. Out of the ten, one has a weekday graduation, four are Saturdays, and five are Sundays.
Yeah.
Most of them do.
Yeah.
And I think the other.
I don't know how they're.
Why didn't you survey, the, the survey results are odd to me, you sent out a hundred and twenty-five people and only sixty-five percent had a senior. Why didn't you send the survey to all the parents who have a senior that's going to graduate?
We sent out the, we sent out, we have an email list of parents that have email addresses, we sent the survey out. We had a hundred and twenty-three responses.
Guys, we need to get back and work on this.
I have a question, Tom.
Yeah.
Was the fifth, Sunday, the fifth, ever a consideration? I mean, I can see that. No, I, I think that probably would be an idea that people would definitely not want, to extend it into the weekend after school.
Finishes.
I don't know, Sunday. Well, I mean, I, it's, it's something that if we redo a survey, we could put that date out there.
We have a senior sitting here. Ryan, you got your hand up.
Um, could you just scroll up on the document a little bit to the end of the last, that you can write up this, uh, schedule?
Sure.
So, uh, what I have seen so far is some really godly results with. So, uh, what I have seen so far is some really dodgy results with a small amount of people that actually received the survey, actually being the parent of a senior. Seeing the results split up by days over the weekend compared to one weekday, which is a disproportionate amount compared to weekend, two weekday. And then we've heard evidence of schools having their, uh, total of nine schools, I think, there was?
Ten schools, only one of them on a weekday.
Both nine schools still had theirs on the weekend, which conflicts with your, uh, statement that other school districts, which we don't even know the number of, that follow the same kind of agenda. And with all of this still in mind, dodgy results conflicting, uh, facts and evidence, you state that you would still like to move forward the plans to schedule a different day. Am I reading that right?
Well, first of all, on the schools, I have no information here, um, from other schools on when they have scheduled their graduation date. I just know I've talked to D.C. Everest, I've talked to Wausau East, um, I haven't surveyed other districts. The process here is, it's not, it's not a decision that I'm going to make at a building level. The process involves, um, bringing a proposal, developing a proposal, bringing it to the board for discussion. Uh, apologize about not, uh, putting a notice out, we put information in our newsletter, I know the newspaper had a story on this. We, it's, it's something that I just think, instructionally, we should bring it up and we should talk about it. If it's, if we're not prepared, and I, I agree, it is, uh, sh- uh, short on time here, talking about it in the fall. But we, we finally finalized our school calendar last spring. So, um, this is, this, these are some of the issues, I don't know how other districts are maybe adjusting to the new requirement of instructional hours versus instructional days. But, um, I thought it was something important that we should discuss and bring it to the board.
How, I understand the points that are, that are made as far as, um, you know, when, when seniors and underclassmen are in the same class, and, you know, they took the test, and they're done, and the other kids are kind of sitting there. But how does the change in the law in this Act two fifty-seven, how does, I guess I didn't, I didn't grasp how that changes, how that affects this change, or is it just kind of, it's just one of the reasons why we should change?
Okay, so if we would have had, let's say, school would end, uh, on Monday, the sixth, or Tuesday, the seventh, because we, we eliminated some days in the calendar. If the school year would have ended on the sixth, if, and then we followed our, our pattern of scheduling graduation, it would have been on the June fifth, Sunday, June fifth. Because we were able to condense the calendar, and on Friday, our scheduled date this year is Sunday, May twenty-ninth.
I, I see.
So, the thought was, do we look at a different day, a different time, or even ending on the last day of school to, to address some of the instructional issues where kids are, kids are, uh, leaving the classroom, and the finals are given. And, uh, some, I, D.C. Everest, they don't even administer finals to their seniors.
Are you saying that the seniors won't meet their instructional hours?
No, I'm not saying that.
That, that was kind of my.
So, they will still meet their instructional hours?
Well, you're, I guess technically, they, yes, they would be missing those.
But will they meet them if they end on the Friday of the board?
Yeah.
Mike, I think we have moved from our presentation to discussion here.
Yeah, we have.
I'm gonna make a motion here, so we can continue discussion. I move the board approve the date of June third for the class of two thousand sixteen commencement.
Do we have a second to motion?
No, just remind you that if we don't get a second, it's a yes, we're done.
We're done discussing anything about it, or we're just?
Board, you can make a new motion.
I'd like to make a new motion. Do we have to wait until?
We have a motion, we have a motion on the floor, second has been requested once, we'll ask for a second one more time. Third and final time for a second on the motion. Motion goes nowhere.
I would make a.
Guys, the last one's second.
I would make a motion that for the two thousand sixteen school year, that we keep the graduation on the twenty-ninth as it stands.
Second.
I think it does.
Well, no.
Well, then can we continue discussing?
No, we have a motion from Ms. Yelzal, second from Dr. McKenna, that the board approve, May twenty-ninth, as the graduation date for the class of two thousand sixteen commencement. Now we can discuss.
I, I guess the reason why, and I, I understand the concerns that, uh, Mr. Zanzaw is bringing up, and, um, you know, some issues that go along with this, but I think it's too late to do this this year. I feel like, you know, plans have been made, and, and the W.I.A., um, track and field, I mean, that, depending on what we decide to do in years coming, that could still be a problem, but I, I guess for this year, I feel like it's too late to make a change, so that's why I'm making this motion. And then maybe after that, or maybe in a, a meeting, maybe next month or the month after, we could bring up the idea of, okay, let's figure out now, before it's spring, what we're gonna do, for, maybe even make it a policy, I don't know if that's appropriate, for the rest, so that again, people can continue planning. And, and I think too, I, I, I also made some calls today to area schools, and I kind of found the opposite thing that you did, Mike. I found more schools that do it on weekdays versus weekends. But, we've been doing for what, twenty-seven years, or maybe even longer, our graduation's been on a Sunday, and maybe we like that tradition, and that's what continues. But again, I think that what we're going to do for two thousand seventeen and forward could be a discussion we could do at a separate meeting soon, but not tonight. But for now, I think that we should keep it the same for next year.
If I may interject, I would suggest that if you are gonna entertain moving the graduation date, you do it for identified incoming freshman class, and that will not impact any students already in the school.
That's exactly right. So, that's, that was my point, I mean, the process is rushed, uh, their students would not be allowed to attend graduation. I think part of the purpose of, you know, going through, you know, your time here, is that you should be able to walk through graduation, and that seems to be, takes that to trump this process.
And walk through the graduation in a more relaxed pace, I, I see the schedule for Friday, the third, and it just seems like, I, I'm tired of looking at it. You know, to come with a, with a more proposed schedule that probably isn't as rushed as this would be.
I would like to point out that, um, earlier on, when the point, Mike, and you made it very succinctly about having a photo of that school's schedule, how that got added on there, I do not know, there is not a board policy on graduation date. I just wanna make sure that, that you're clear on that, whoever did that will deal with it. But, uh, but I appreciate the fact that you took the time to, to point that out to us, and thank you, so.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Yes. You know, I like Dr. Child's idea there, but I think that revolves around, we should be maintaining our school schedules more than one year in advance.
Yes. That is exactly.
There should be at least two years.
That, that is a very good idea.
All right, any other discussion on the motion?
Given that, um, as my class is the most involved party in all of this, it just feels wrong that not only was there a huge issue with communication with parents of seniors and other community members, but there was this, like, absolute lack of this, uh, like, kind of bringing this to the class's attention, just saying, here's what we might have planned, here's what we might go through with, and with, like, people that are informed on this kind of stuff in my class, I can't, I just can't do my job with that, I can't represent their views if they don't have any knowledge of a certain situation. And it puts me in this awkward position where I kind of have to talk with students that may have found out from their parents, who have found out from other parents. And so I'm only getting a fraction of the whole student group.
Well, let's see how the vote goes, and see how you wanna talk to them tomorrow.
And, and gen- and generally in that regard, it may be where, you know, if there's a process where, I mean, you set as a liaison to the students, you might, um, request different approaches to how you lead with administration. You might request different means of communication, but that'd be very reasonable, and if there's anything that you feel needs to be presented to the board, we certainly can discuss that. So, but maybe you can do it independently, and sort of what you do.
And don't forget to move back to Annie, go and run for the school board. Any further, any further discussion?
Do we need a motion on this?
There is a motion and a second on the floor, I will restate it before we.
Well, I know, that is what I'm saying, is what I thought you stated, that it's already scheduled.
We're gonna affirm it. Put in. The motion is that the board approve the date of May twenty-ninth for the class of two thousand sixteen commencement. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries, graduation date will be May twenty-ninth. Please do not applaud. Thank you. We will go on to item six B, the facilities update. I'm sorry, this part will not be as interesting to some of you as it is to all of us.
You have in front of you our copy of what has been on the website, and was the original scope of proposals and concepts that were brought forward, so, I think you already have our copy of this one, it was updated once, I don't know if you had the one, two, or three. You also have, um, some revised options, um, based off of, um, World Cafe from Tuesday. And, uh, those include Concepts two, two A, two B, three, three A, three B, C, D, E, uh, which is, they're separate, I think, Concept four. And there's quite a spread, if you will, of changes there. The other thing you have is preliminary costing that Myron did on the options that have been discussed, uh, that are here. So, um, if you look at the costing sheet, for instance, Concept two, which builds one new school in a rural elementary area, and one new school, um, in the city, you're looking at costs that range from thirty-eight point eight million to forty-two million. If you look at the option two A, which is a variation of that, that keeps, uh, some of the elementaries open, current elementaries, uh, and puts additions on the facilities and expands them, you see, uh, one, one new school in the rural area, look, it specifies Crestwood site, but that's fungible, uh, depending on what the board likes, that option is twenty-three million and a half to twenty-six million. Then, uh, Concept two B, uh, which essentially closes the schools again, and, uh, actually, uh, puts new schools, one north and east in the district, one west and south in the district, you're looking at a range of thirty-six point eight million to forty million. Concept three, um, it basically keeps your K-four, that at your committee, the whole meeting, you indicated that you sort of liked, um, five, seven, moving to the middle school, and eight through twelve in the high school. This does not entail any new building, it entails renovations and additions, uh, to Mattoon, Crestwood, Spring Valley, Pleasant View, and an addition on West, East and North when they close, and that range is twenty-one million to twenty-three and a half million. And then, uh, what we've called here, Concept three E, which keeps Mattoon open, and does renovation and addition, and closes Crestwood, and keeps Spring Valley open with an addition and renovation, and closes Pleasant View North, East, and puts a large addition on West with, uh, renovation, um, has a range of twenty-five million to twenty-eight million. And Concept four, just for purposes of comparison, which, uh, again closes, um, the rural schools except for Crestwood, and the city schools, um, and makes the middle school, the Central City Elementary K-four building, um, you're looking at a range of forty-nine to fifty-four million. So, that's new information on what costing looks like for those things that you've been talking about. There's more costing going on with other options that are on the original list, but, uh, we wanted to share this with you, and start hearing your discussion as to whether there are things you wanna vote on eliminating, and what options you think are probably the most viable. What I would suggest is, taking a look first at, at where you were at the, at the whole meeting, is it your intention to eliminate any option that closes all of the rural schools? And, and you might wanna say, well, depends on whether we're gonna replace them or not, and that's okay too, that's part of that discussion. But is that an option you wanna eliminate? Closing all the city schools, is that an option you wanna eliminate? You wanna bring those back, how do you wanna proceed?
I want to first begin by, you know, looking, in terms of the costs and, and what we see, I mean, eh, the general assumption is that these are bricks and mortar buildings. Is that right, in terms of building?
Yeah.
So, I mean, is there, I mean, essentially what we're talking about with new building, particularly with sites that may change in terms of demographics, building a building that may last for a very long time and be very well-built, that becomes foolish to have in that spot. Is it possible to build something that is significantly less expensive, that is not going to last as long? Essentially, build schools like were built, that we are currently using now, but are updated, yeah, exactly, but are, but are updated to the twenty-first century. I mean, obviously, it wouldn't, you would build them to code now, and you would, but they would not be anticipated to last as this building will last. Which would make sense in terms of changing demographics over the next twenty to thirty years. I don't know what that building would look like, I think it would involve creativity on the part of, of, um, Bray, Myron, um, you know, to look at different options for that. I suspect options like that exist.
Uh, it's a really good question, and quite frankly, it's a question I think we would have to put to Myron, who are the builders, in terms of whether there is a way to build a building that's only gonna be good for ten or fifteen years. Then the question becomes if we're gonna look at that...
Let's say twenty years.
Let's say twenty years, you could build a pole building and it'll last a hundred years.
Well, yeah, you could, except that building a pole barn isn't going to meet any of the state codes for what the building requires, but you could do that.
Well, why won't it?
It won't, because you just look at the construction of a pole barn.
Let's not say a pole building, then, let's say a school building.
Okay, you could do that. And I don't know what the cost would be, but I'm sure Myron can tell us and cost it out, we can ask him. There's a certain square footage, you know, per pupil that you figure on. And depending on the level, whether it's elementary, middle, or high school. And then you look at how many students we want to put in there and determine how much space it's gonna require. Then you add per the square foot cost and multiply it out and figure out what it's gonna be. I don't know that building, a metal building, a new building, just for the sake of it being new, is any more advantageous than doing an R and R on existing facilities.
What makes you think that?
Well, I mean, if you do the R and R on the existing facilities, you get essentially what you would get if you just put up a short-term metal building, or pole barn, or whatever else it might happen to be.
So, there's not much of a difference in terms of tearing down walls and pulling electrical out versus building, you know, more modular sort of walls and playing electrical in it?
Yeah, I'm guessing there aren't.
You're getting into those details.
Yeah, I'm guessing there aren't, and if you want Myron looking into that, you certainly can do so.
I do. I think we need medium-term building recommendations, at least to augment these numbers.
No, and then Patrick, what I would caution the board a little bit, I get where you're coming from, I really do. One of the things I've told people that I really like about this high school is the furnishings are, they're very utilitarian, they're, this is a very nice building, but it was designed, like on the first floor is an example, where you have all your backpack traffic and you have all your student movement. We have burnished block. We haven't touched those block, any maintenance of anything in twenty years. And I know that comes at a cost, but had that been sheet rock walls, we would be touching it every day. We would be, Wausau, Wausau East is a classic example. They went for some glitz and glitter and they put this sheet rock up and they are maintaining it. We've got terrazzo tile floors down in the suburbs. It's tile, it's not poured terrazzo in place. We went from having that building close for two weeks at a time to now we never close it and we almost do it sort of supermarket style, where we do it in the evenings and off-hours. So, not that anything's, I don't think there's a free lunch out there.
Right.
You know, whether we have to go to the extent of the Taj Mahal is questionable, but there's trade-offs.
Absolutely, and that's a very good point, Tim. And this building, I mean, it makes a ton of sense for this building to last. You know, just, this, you know, even if population shift in the community, high school students will come to this building. But, you know, you look down, you know, like, let's say we wanted a building that was upgraded, you know, in the Mattoon, Crestwood area. That's where the population is right now. But these will be families without children in twenty years. Are they moving in twenty years, you know, en masse? Perhaps, perhaps not. Perhaps there's a shift to the southwest part of the county because of community to Wausau, maybe Wa, you know, there's just, sometimes the demographics are tough to pick up. And so I think with some of our building ideas, it's important to have one piece and really effective buildings that will last and stand the test of time. I think the middle school is like a classic example, that building's been remodeled. It is a jewel in there. You walk around in there, it's a jewel because, I mean, there's always things that could be better. But for its age and for what you all have done, it's tremendous. But, you know, we may not want that for, you know, our schools, you know, that where the population will change quite a bit.
But are we gonna nickel and dime ourselves in it too, because like what you say?
I think we should.
It isn't just, it isn't just the fact, how long is it going to last? It's also, while it lasts, what kinds of upgrades are we gonna have to do on an ongoing basis? And then you take into that considerations that probably aren't going to be able to be calculated, like labor, you know, the time it's gonna take to update these things, whereas if you have something that is going to last longer, we wouldn't have to do that kind of stuff.
Well, I think you have a case study in that, already presented to the district.
We do?
Yeah, the elementary schools that, you know, that were built quickly, you know, throughout the county.
But then going off that, you know, I don't want to do to the two thousand and forty Schoolless of Ananquin School Board what the nineteen fifty-nine School Board is doing now.
Who is on that board in nineteen fifty-nine?
I have no idea, but we're still dealing with it.
But I think we're always gonna have.
I think we're gonna be, if that's gonna even be close, I don't think we should nickel and dime it either because I think for our students, we want better and we don't know that far out what's going to happen.
I'm not talking terrible schools, I'm talking schools that are up to code, that have space for the kids to run and play in. I mean, if you have a large building, you know, that, there's space for that. I mean, right now, we can have a lot better than what we have.
Well, right now, you'd still be looking at, what, if you, if we just say for an example, if, what are you thinking? Like do it on the Crestwood site? Because you're not thinking we're gonna purchase additional land for this, are you?
That's odd.
Let's, we're gonna give Ryan an opportunity here to say something.
Mr. McKenna has a great idea in concept. The thing is, we probably won't be able to hold the future boards to say, this building was only built to last, because I mean, we're having the same problem here.
To be another Western.
Well, let me, let me...
Yeah, we don't have the ability to hold them to, this building's gonna last ten, twenty years only, to be able, so you can relocate it with changing demographics.
That's a very good, but let me bring, but let me bring a counterpoint to that. What if the people on the fifties did us a favor? What if that school up in Lilly was one of the nicest buildings around? Or the school over at River Grove is one of the nicest around? And we said, how can we give up this building? You know, it's been working so well. You know, but instead, they built, they gave us buildings that weren't meant to last this long. And, you know, now the time has come for us to address it, and actually it makes it easier for us to address it rather than...
But Patrick, the only thing which the concept is, and I think Tim understands that on that part, when you're building the building, you're gonna use, like you said, to build a little cheaper with cheaper material, but you're still gonna have the same labor costs, basically, and stuff in, you know, unfortunately, they're gonna be building that wall, even if they're not putting that expensive tile on, but they're putting something to get, that don't last as long. Unfortunately, you're gonna save on the price of the material, but I don't know, but you're not gonna save on the labor. So I don't know if it's, it would be that much savings. It would be some savings, but I don't know if it's enough worth it.
And I think, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, and I'm just gonna say to the same, to the same end, I think the point is though is, what if they had built a really nice school up in Lilly? I think you'd have a better time selling it because look at all the little like schoolhouses that are always beautiful that people have turned in because they're structurally very good.
I disagree with that because people can't live, well, actually, somebody does in River Grove. But I think it's more, I think it's easier to convert a little schoolhouse into a home.
But we don't even know what that would look like.
I know, I'm just saying, yeah.
But River Grove was the best school in the district elementary, I think. I mean, it was one of the best, and we sold it for fifty thousand dollars.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five. So we didn't sell it for much money.
And if somebody wants to buy Crestwood, then at some point turned in, we'll ban breakfast.
And I'm actually okay with Tim's comment. I guess what I would like to see is some creativity on the part of Myron Bray. They have a vested interest in more expensive buildings, from the standpoint of if they get to build them. But I don't know if we'll ever get to that. I guess I would like to see what they can come up with, from a creative standpoint, and maybe some examples of some schools that are perhaps, you know, a different type, yeah, metal building. Pole building, I'm okay, I would be okay going to a school on a pole building. As a kid, right, we talked about that before, didn't we, at one of the forums? I'm sorry, Brian.
It's actually, it's Brian.
What is it?
You said Brian.
Brian, no, I said, I just, I said Brian.
Going back to that, that's a great idea for, again, the country schools because those areas are always gonna change. We're always gonna have a Mattoon that's complaining about something. It wouldn't make sense.
Ogs, ogs. It's an opportunity to speak, let the young man have his moment.
But that's a very poor idea if we're going to have the one central building located in Antigo. Because chances are, Antigo itself isn't probably gonna change too much where the people are located, just possibly the overall population. So I think probably one of the best courses of action would be to build a building in Antigo, more of the central location that is built to last, while possibly looking into maybe seeing if we can't in these rural communities, build these cheaper buildings that are more temporary to be able to meet the changing demographics in those areas. Brennan, you got something?
I'm gonna come, I'm gonna come a little philosophical, 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 I'll add it for a moment. How do you predict the future? You look at the past. Before we start coming up with a central idea and a area where you want to start, that building, that brick foundation, before you start that, you need to look back and you need to see where those people are moving, if they're moving closer to Wausau. Ryan Lander, Merrill, you need to look to other places before you can come out with one central idea. You need that brick foundation, and I think that that needs to be something that is looked into by experts, first of all.
Which I would say it already has, because that's part of the discussions that we've had prior to you. Being a student rep on the board, was looking at the demographics and also looking at where the population centers are. And currently, the population centers for district are on the eastern side of the district.
Okay.
Then, are we looking at the eastern side?
That's part of the rural contingency, is we are looking at the eastern and southern portions of the district because that is that population base.
Okay.
Does that answer your question? Yeah, Mike, you know, we say that the population is on the east side, and I know I've heard that a lot of times, but I look at Mattoon, Spring Valley, Pleasant View. The enrollment there has, in all three of the schools, has declined by twenty percent in the last five years.
Pleasant View's on the west.
That's right, but it's still a rural school and our rural schools are declining rapidly. And I think we need to look at, why would they do that? And, you know, I think we need to get some information, and how many farms have we lost in the county in the last twenty years? How much, how many jobs that we've lost on farms? When I go out to, you know, I work with a lot of potato farmers, and I go out there, they're always pretty darn happy to show me this new thing that eliminates a person. And I'll just give you an example. Two years ago, one of the farms bought a grader. It's electronic grader for grading potatoes, eliminated five people. They do twenty percent more work in a day, minus the five people, they only had about ten people working. Yeah, that was one, two years ago. This year, six of those in the county. And so, you know, there's been some other things like that. And I think this is true in forestry too, you know, forestry has just made this tremendous mechanization thing here in the last, oh, ten years, really. And, you know, I think a lot of where people live depends on that job they have. And if you've eliminated the job, it makes it hard to live there. So, you know, and then, I'm just gonna do it right now, we got these concepts here where we have, those Spring Valley, a hundred and thirty kids out there, and do we really have a hundred and thirty kids anymore to go there? And we can say, well, let's just take some out of the city and send them out there. But Mr. Schultz, you just said, we have the Community Relations Committee meeting at Spring Valley this month because we don't want to drive out there in the winter, but do we expect parents to drive out there in the winter?
Well, they do live out there, and with, usually when a snowing, blowing snowstorm like that, which drifting over the road, closing the road down, we call school off, you know, so.
Well, the other thing is, and some of that, like for enrollment in Mattoon and stuff too, that's a matter of where that border is put, where they're shipping from. There's a lot of these kids on the very north side of Flocks, right there, that go to Crestwood, that would have, the mileage would be no different going to Mattoon, so. That's all I just want to say, is that that number is a little discretionary too in some of the areas. You know, Mattoon's the lowest enrollment school right now. But part of that is because where they put some of the kids. Some of these kids can very well go to Mattoon, but no longer bus ride, it'd still be in the same area. So that's just why I just want to say.
Yeah, I agree with that, if that is the community they want to be part of. If they want to be part of the Antigo community, then they should be going to a school this way.
You know, this is the Antigo school district. We're all part of the Antigo.
We're all part of the school, Antigo school district. And, you know, I'm not saying let's close Mattoon. I'm saying, I don't think we should take kids from an area and ship them the wrong way for our benefit. We should try to determine where parents want those kids shipped. Right now, you know, we have kids on the south side of Antigo that we ship to Spring Valley because there's no room in the city schools to put them. And so, does that make a lot of sense, not to me?
Brian, go ahead, you got one more shot.
And that, to me, is another great reason to kind of work at this idea of these temporary buildings out in rural areas. Because, say, one year you got enough, like, students living out there to maybe build five buildings. You look at the next year, the populations have moved around, but now in the overall rural area, you only have enough to build four. So with that, you can slowly kind of decrease the amount of schools you have to build. And therefore, also at the same time reducing funding costs, because now you're not stuck with, like, five buildings with forty, like, thirty students, tops. And then, with like building the town, the central town school to last, we can build that with, like, a growth in mind of the population of the town as people are kind of moving out of these rural areas because of the increasing amount of jobs. So with that, you can plan with the one central building and kind of be able to shuffle around these rural buildings to the changing demographics of the area. And it's a little bit of a stretch, a little bit of a difficulty there, but, I mean, otherwise, the other alternative is we are looking at our buildings, like, two-door buildings to last, or just fixing the buildings from the fifties, which is honestly, like, trying to do less and trying to just kind of put a band-aid on things, that's only probably gonna help for the next fifty years, tops. And then, again, they're going to be sitting in a position like us where no one can kind of come to a general consensus because they all just kind of want to go fix it up.
Jake, you had a point.
I spent ten years building every level of building, from, you know, ten to twelve-story buildings to hospitals, to casinos, food processing areas. Every building has a different composition based on what their goal is. You can go a more economical, flexible route, but when you get to that way, just be careful. It becomes, the ability to change quicker, such as in a casino setting, they don't care about the long-term picture of that building, because they're gonna rip it down anyways. And that's where those buildings are made for. When you get into a school setting that you're trying to, security is one big one, just, not that it can't be done, but just be cautious.
And I think you had a good point too, is we wanna, we're going through this process here, when we build these, build, remodel, what we do to these buildings, we want it for the long range. We don't want to be, we don't want the next board, you know, fifteen years from now, to have to go through the same thing. So, that's why we hopefully we build them, because, like you said, we can't guess it perfect, but, you know, to build it for the long range.
What if we got twenty good years out of a building? And we'd stretch it out, because it wouldn't just be twenty.
Well, this is twenty years on this building.
Like we're at right now.
You know, there's some significant...
For twenty years in this building, think about it, do you want to start over on something like this? Or what are we talking about that you want to build for just twenty years?
Hey, so, so let me just say, I'd like to build one single consolidated one.
Okay, along your line, I'm thinking though, for pole buildings, every township in this community has built brand-new town halls, and a little renovation in that could make them little elementary schools in every little burg, so.
and a little renovation in them could make them little elementary schools in every little burg, so.
But Jim, you're a Viking family, remember. You're gonna, you're gonna take, the, the difference is, you're gonna take three or four hundred kids every single day. They're gonna go through, watch the way a kid uses a building. They don't carefully come up to a door and open it with a little step. They jump on a panic bar, you know, they hang on doors, they, they go down the hallway beating on stuff. Watch them jump out of the middle school.
I was just taking Tim, our past idea.
You're talking about a town hall where sixty-five-year-old people come once a month. Totally different usage.
We damage the doors with our walkers.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, guys, guys, Brian.
I think just to Tim's point, um, if you go to the middle school, you go down a ramp in the three-story building, and that happens to be an overhang in that ramp, just because the ramp was added on later. And the overhang is made of sheet rock. I've been at the middle school for just over two years now at this point. That overhang has been repatched five times since I've been there, because middle school kids unfortunately cannot resist touching that thing. Um, sheet rock only holds up for so long before it, and, you know, granted, these are kids that are hitting it on purpose, but as they're going through, they, they do some serious damage to those types of buildings, and that, that type of structure. So I, I think what Tim's getting at is just the wear and tear, just of kids, takes a huge, huge toll on our buildings.
So, so it sounds, you guys, I'll only give Clint an opportunity to say something, he had your hand up, please. Uh, just, just a couple of points. Part of the, the problem or the quandary that every school district faces is we have to go through the referendum process to do major capital movement projects such as this. And the best, the best districts that we see that are equipped to do this tend to go through this on a cyclical manner, whether it's ten years, twenty years, what have you. They, they sort of set themselves up that they create, unfortunately, at some point, most districts have to create a big debt, and you guys had to do it for this. Um, for a, a major project, you, you create that, that large debt, um, that sort of sets you up in the future. And then, um, you know, again, the ten, fifteen, twenty-year cycle down the road. Part of the problem with building a temporary building is you're doing a twenty-year borrow for that. So now suddenly, in that twenty years, when that building, which needs major repairs, um, suddenly you also are required to do major repairs potentially on this building. It's gonna be a new roof, new HVAC, and it only further compounds that. To the point of, of, of making it, making it cheaper as well, I mean, there's, there's also things to think of um, with regard to the mechanical systems, which generally make up a huge chunk of the portion of the project. So there are two, again, the, the, the systems and, and, you know, again, we, we do these schools all over the state, and, and I can, I can tell you, we, we get beat up on cost, make it cheaper, make it cheaper. We, you know, right now, we're in this cycle with how the market is, that, that, you know, everything's much more expensive than it was two years ago. We set the, the referendums and the budgets for a lot of the projects that we have in construction right now. So we're trying to find every single thing we can do to cut out of these projects, whether it's minimizing the roofing, having exposed mechanicals on the roof. Um, I mean, the, 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 the budgets that we've kind of created, while, while, yes, they seem high, these are very, very efficiently well-built buildings. We start a project with our structural engineer every time. His name's Tom. Hey, Tom, what do you think for the walls? Are, are we fricking block on this? And he's, he said, yeah, that, that, that's the most efficient. This layout, the, the size of a classroom, it's, it's fricking block. That, that's, that's your best bang for your buck. Times when we start to go up in, in height, yes, we, we are looking more at steel, but, um, uh, I mean, to, to the, the pole barn, uh, we, we can get to that. So yes, we can look for ways to, to trim, trim budget and find ways to save costs. You know, I, we're not gonna get to a point where we're able to just knife these budgets in half by any means, but we'll certainly, you know, Myron and Ray will certainly work with you to try to find positive effective solutions that balance the longevity of the building, that balance the maintain, maintenance of the building, and all of those things. It's, there's all those things you have to juggle.
Tara.
Um, I wanted to comment on two things that, that Ryan had said. One, uh, that I, I think is kind of the understanding, that I, I like the idea, I, I understand, Patrick, what you're trying to say, but I'm concerned that we're gonna have another modular building like at West. People are gonna say, oh, no, I'm not saying it's going to be in that caliber, but that's what's gonna happen. They're gonna keep it longer than they need to, because we've been doing it for twenty years, what's another twenty? So I'd be really concerned about that. I guess, Ryan, one thing I wanted you to understand, and, and you wouldn't, because you haven't been here for all these meetings, but the comments about, you know, temporary in the rural, brick and mortar in the city, make it centralized. What we need to do is, and it isn't, honestly, it's not a concept that I particularly like, are, you know, the ideas that are being presented, but they're, they're realistic, because we need to ask taxpayers, a lot of which are in the rural areas, we need to ask them to pay for this. And they're saying, we like our rural, we, we're here, and we deserve to be, you know, we deserve to be known here. So, I, I'm not scolding or anything, but I, I think that you deserve to kind of know the issue, and I agree, like the declining enrollment is happening everywhere, but, and I honestly don't know if it's more in the rural schools, but I, I believe it is. But regardless of that, we, we can't ignore the rural area, because there are kids there, and they don't mean any less than the ones in town, but also, also it has to do with, we need to make the voters happy. So we need to consider everything, even though it, it may be more temporary out there, I, I don't know. And like Brennan said, like, we don't have a crystal ball on it. I, I just wanted to make you aware of that, just so you understand kind of what, the issues that, that we have to look at also.
Yeah, I, I know about some of those kind of like arguments that either we don't want to have, to have like this increase in taxes to pay off this massive project, or we don't have kids in school, why would we need to like kind of fund this in our taxes if it's not gonna help us at all? It's just kind of a lack of looking forward into what could change.
But it could change where maybe rural gets bigger. We, we don't know that, we don't know if that's.
No crystal ball.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I think if we had rural, we would all made a million to be living out of this valley somewhere.
Well, I think, I think the question is, I mean, I think some of what's happening is there's a little bit of sticker shock going on here, and I understand that, in fact, it was intended that that would kind of be the case, because we had the numbers out in front of you before, didn't know what they would be. But, um, the question is, at the end of this evening, do you want to have made a decision about what's next? Do you want to make a decision as to what to eliminate? Do you want to make a decision about not deciding anything until you see some more costing? Do, what, what is your pleasure? I, I just think it's, it's time, you have about a month left to get this narrowed down, about two or three options. And I think it's time to start making some decisions around these things.
Can we have this brought to the forum?
It will be, yeah.
But I, I don't know that, do we want to make any decisions before?
Well, I think we, I think we need to maybe eliminate a few of what's, because if we're, basically what I'm hearing is we're going back to the whole basis overview for everybody here to have to make sure it's understood, what's, what's, what's gonna be off the board, and what's not. So I feel we need to, so everyone understands it, so it ain't no confusion, you know, so.
If we have some decisions, if you sort of answer questions.
Well, and yes, and, you know, do you want to reaffirm your consensus by taking a formal vote to eliminate any option that would close all the rural schools, or all the city schools, or would move sixth grade to the high school? I mean, you've already kind of taken that step, but you haven't voted. Do you want to make it a formal step and, and provide an explanation to the public? I mean, it would be part of the program Thursday night then to say, we have eliminated these options, or this option, and the reason is X, Y, or Z. And, you know, we'll move on from there, and we'll certainly share the costing that we have, and any that we may get for them, but I don't know that there'll be much more coming forward.
I think Don has presented a, a good idea there, it's, it's fairly simple. In about three votes, we can eliminate the way of three options. And I think we already did it, but yes, we could reaffirm.
Anybody we want, want to make a motion to?
I would make a motion that we eliminate all options that eliminate either all rural schools or a lot of city schools.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Mary, second for Mr. McKenna, to eliminate any options that include closing all rural or all city schools. Is that accurate? Okay, motion and a second is on the floor, do we have discussion?
So would that mean eliminating concept two, even though it's saying new schools in the rural and city?
No, because it's not eliminating a presence of those areas.
Okay, okay. I get it.
Then that in turn would eliminate, I not clo, but that, that motion too would in turn eliminate the one-school concept two at the same time.
The mega school.
The mega score.
Correct.
Right, that would eliminate that concept in with the same.
Yes.
Motion, yes.
Yes, that's a good point.
Yeah.
True.
It would, it would, yes, it would, yes.
Any further discussion on the motion? Motion before the board is that any of the options that close all rural and city, city elementary schools are to be eliminated.
Was it all rural or?
Or.
Or, is that right?
Yeah. Rural or city elementary schools.
Going back to the ones we actually have on the table, are any of those options, are we leaving the option on the table to bring up another class to the high school and bring more into the middle school?
The tension's still there, it is.
Yes.
From a student standpoint, actually going through what we have left then, I see nothing but trouble coming out of moving another class to the high school. I personally have, about half of my classes are filled to capacity, like, there are not enough seats or room in the classrooms to actually physically bring courses into the class. So that would be a huge issue with that, as well as, there's already kind of a little bit of just social.
Ryan, Ryan, I am gonna stop you, because that really isn't part of the discussion for this motion. So, I appreciate your concern, but yeah, for this particular motion, unfortunately, that's not part of the discussion at this time. So, we are, there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Do you want to take any action with respect to moving the sixth grade to the high school?
I'll make a motion that we do not keep any concept that moves a sixth grade to the high school.
Second then.
Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Fuller, second for Mr. Jansma, that we do not move the sixth grade class to the high school building. Correct?
Yes.
Any discussion on that motion?
This is an option to eliminate, I mean, a motion to eliminate any concepts that would do that, is that correct?
Concepts that would do that.
Correct, that's correct. I think we might have done that already, but.
I think we do that.
We've done all this.
Well, we did it.
We have this one.
We did it.
Yeah, but it, it, which, so there's no, there's no argument. But let's just clarify and go through the motions on the floor.
Yeah, let's go through the motion on the floor, it's out there. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Eight to one, the motion carries. Mr. Mary, you have a session. So, the motion not to move the sixth grade to the high school.
I think that wheels out a few things. Clint.
Could we, I think there were a couple of other items that, that board kind of discussed as general, generalities last time. Um, one was eliminating any options that had, um, what we'll call kind of an equal split of the grade levels. Um, there were, made a fair amount of options that kind of had, the thing was kind of between the rural and the city, the rural had, um, off the top of my head, it was like a K-five in the rural, and then in the city it was K-two, and then it was three-six, and it's kind of a.
Two tracks.
Yes, yeah.
Two-track schools.
And that, that was a discussion point last time, and you wanted to keep, however the grade splits were in the rural and the city, uh, the same.
I, I think too, Clint, if I remember a lot of the discussion correctly, we were really, um, there seemed to be a lot of support, from my perception of it, to have a K-four, five, seven, then eight, twelve. And those were the splits that seemed to be most advantageous.
I would make that motion, that we eliminate any, uh, concepts that are not K-four, five, seven, eight, twelve.
Absolutely not. We haven't even discussed K through six, and, uh, seven and twelve closing middle school hasn't even been put out there yet as a public option, and had comment on. Jim, there is a motion on the floor, moment we have to deal with first. It was made by Ms. Gelsa, second by Ms. Long, that the grade splits be K-four, five, seven, and eight, twelve. Now discussion, Tim.
The only question I want to raise for the board is, we've had discussions about possibly a school of choice, wherever that might be. Would that decision necessarily affect the configuration of that school of choice going?
It probably could if it was.
If they make the motion, then, then that would.
If that school of choice would go further than five.
Four K.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. So you might as well say.
That would.
Yep. That's a very good point, that's a very good point.
I think, you know, we want to stay a little more open. Jim, you know, you've been pushing to sell the middle school. That baby sells for twenty-five million, I'm on board. I might even be on board at fifteen now. But, you know, we still have options here that, um, we might want some other split that they gave. I guess the other one that, that comes to mind for me is, uh, do we really want to keep that sixth grade portion of the middle school? I mean, we could eliminate that and have that a two-grade school, and have K-five or seven, eight in the high school.
Tom, you have a question?
I think what you started was, you were talking about having different splits in town and out of town, and I was the one that brought those options forward. Then, listening to the board, I have already negated those and replaced them. So, you know, I think that's different than saying you're choosing a K-four, five, seven split if you're versus multiple splits.
Yeah, just, just be clear, it wasn't just your, there were a lot of schemes, there was a lot of schemes that had that, so it wasn't just yours. Yeah.
Thank you.
Steve?
Any of you?
Schemes are good.
But it's getting a little late.
Any further discussion on the motion?
And, I mean, I, I agree, it, it is narrowing, and, and maybe it fails, but, I mean, gosh, if we don't get this going.
Yeah, but do we need, okay, the only question I have, do we need to narrow it?
It maybe just need to be that narrow.
To specify it, K-four right now? You know, we pretty much have, that can be a part of the discussion yet.
We do have a motion on the floor, two vote on, and we probably need to take that vote on, and see where it goes, okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Sounds to me like a two to seven vote, which the motion is defeat.
Thanks, James.
A motion that eliminates any options that has unequal transitions for elementary children.
I will second that.
Well, would the exception on the charter, should you have that?
With a possible exception?
With the possible like section of any charter or innovative school.
I'll second that.
I would make a motion that we eliminate any option that has unequal transition for elementary kids, with the possible exception of charter or innovative school.
Second.
You already did.
She's just reaffirming.
I'm reaffirming my second.
This is a whole meeting about reaffirmation.
Just as a, you mind a preference?
Yeah, just want to make sure I got this down. You're saying eliminate any option that has unequal transition for elementary schools, except charter schools?
And innovative schools.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion on the floor. Okay, the motion on the floor by Mr. Mary, second by Ms. Gelsel, is that the board eliminate any option that has unequal transitions for elementary schools except charter and innovative schools. Now discussion. Is this basically eliminating concept eleven?
Is that the only one that had? All their tracks? Oh, all of eleven's.
I don't know, we haven't really discussed that yet, you know, we looked at it, but.
Well, we discussed it at the committee of the holdups.
The only issue is, do we know for, we, we want to keep it exact, you know, like K four, K four, K five, but in the end, when we're done, do we know for sure that we might not have one or two in my?
Anybody who votes against this motion, Kim, haven't brought up again.
Right, right.
Correct?
Yes, that is correct, yes.
It would also eliminate nine, right? Cause nine has Mattoon, Spring Valley, and Pleasant View, K five, and then Antigua Middle School, K six.
Yes.
But that, but that one's been eliminated before, cause that closes all the city schools, Karen.
Yep.
That's right.
So that one's already gone.
It's already gone.
That one's already gone.
That one's already gone.
What's already gone?
It closes all the.
It already eliminates all the city schools, so it's already gone.
Oh, oh.
So, okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Seven to two, the motion carries. Okay, have we pretty much been given by this affirmative vote, given direction to administration and Myron Bray on what direction we want to build? And these will be things that will be discussed Thursday night. Sound like we're there?
In terms of the, like, two Bs and two As and those things, you know, they, or not, not two Bs, but like, some of those do involve closing, you know, like, you know, closing west instead of north. I can't remember which one that was.
Yeah.
I mean, those, there should perhaps be some flexibility with that, I mean, we've talked about additions to north are not very feasible. West is a better site, I mean, just in terms of making changes like that, or?
I think some of those options that are remaining, that you have left, have issues like that, that are gonna require further discussion.
Right, exactly.
See, I think you're talking, Patrick?
Yeah, is that the one?
Yeah.
What you've really done is just pulled all the low hanging fruit.
Right.
And now it's gonna get tough.
Cause that could go later on, as a board, we could decide if we didn't want to keep, we choose that option that we wanted to keep west, we closed north, or vice versa, we could decide.
Yep.
At what point are we gonna get numbers on operational costs? Because some of these options will be well suited to K twelve busing, for example, and some of them won't. And that's gonna be about a three hundred thousand dollar dip, operational difference.
I, I can tell you, it probably isn't going to be until after we've gotten some costing estimates on all the brick and mortar issues, the building, the additions, the renovations. When those numbers are played out on the remaining options, we'll, in the meantime, be working on developing some of those costs, at least transportation being the highest one. There are other operating costs that I'm not sure we're gonna be able to get to you very soon. I think it may be only after you've narrowed it down to a degree.
Yeah, there were some of these options that said, uh, keep us with the same number of tracks we have right now.
That's still under.
And others that reduce a track.
That is correct, you're, you're talking about the number of sections that are just at a building.
Yes, and that's, that's quite a cost per year.
Some of those options that remain are options that keep single sectioned schools, that's true. And probably in the near future, we're gonna have to press that. Because one of the things you have to remember with operational costs is, the more schools you have, the more single section you have, the more windshield time you're paying for traveling staff, and that's one of those operational costs, and we have to get a handle on that.
I'd like to make just one more motion. That I move Myron and Bray evaluates intermediate term buildings based on the current general guidelines that we've set up for the remaining concepts.
Second?
So right now, and Don just mentioned bricks and mortar, we're talking about this more, you know, quote unquote, pole building, metal building, intermediate type building.
Are you saying?
So I would like them to.
For, for the concepts we have.
For the con, for the, for the build concepts we have, like that are, okay.
Or, and the general, you know, generally how they, you know, whatever concepts are remaining that they're gonna cost out, I guess I would like to see more, I just, whatever that might look like.
Then Patrick, your motion, which was seconded by Mrs. Mead, is that Myron and Bray review the cost for intermediate type building concepts?
Yes.
This would be something between current standards for brick and mortar and chewing gum and baling wire.
Yeah, exactly, or baling wire and chewing gum.
Yeah.
You can flip that. But yes.
Motion is on the floor, discussion?
Uh, yes. I just want to, having had a chance to address this, but you know, we've keep, there's, there's a lot of generalities that are thrown out here that really don't have any basis in fact or, or can be, are provable, and it's, it kind of brings out the discussion we had tonight. All the elementary schools, you know, there's a generality, they're thrown up so fast and stuff like that, they're just thrown together. You know, you cannot, you cannot throw up a concrete block wall, like you're saying. If you go look at every one of these schools, they are, all the joints are struck, they are all straight and in line, and you take, it takes excruciating care with, with lines and stuff like that, and, and plumb lines, to get these walls straight. So, you know, that's, that is a general statement that is kind of scandalizing the buildings themselves. And it may not be true, cause the brick, like I said, the brick and mortar will be there a hundred years from now. If we want to upgrade them, that, the facilities are there to do that with. And like I said, if we're gonna do, any, again with this block and mortar, all these schools you go through, then they are, they're, they're immaculate inside because like Ponti pointed out, you know, they're stone, you know, they, they take the beating, they've, they've lived, whether it's fifty years, they look wonderful. Okay, that's just, that's just a comment on, on how we discuss things.
You don't like my framing.
I guess if we're gonna, if we're gonna try to do something temporary like that, then why don't, why don't I just keep the?
I didn't say temporary.
And, and.
I don't like your framing.
Can I just interject? I, I don't know that I agree with him, but don't you feel we owe it to just like find out? We can totally wash it off.
Okay, then the next question I had was also.
And they say it's like costs as much as renovation, we can say, okay, that's fine.
The questions I have though, don't you have a general square foot per, cost per square foot of what building costs now, brick and mortar? That we could use, like I say, we could, we could take a floor plan of some building and say, what do we need for additions? If we wanted to take a rural school, say we need some kind of additions, and we had, we've run so many square feet, we'd cover everything, we needed to, like a media room, media tech room, arts and crafts, add a sixth grade to it or something like that, that we could just, okay, let's say we need three thousand, three thousand square feet to do this, and we, of a, of a price at four hundred square foot, four hundred dollars per square foot, that would be, what, one point two million dollars? You know, then we would, we would be able to apply this to every single concept as we go along, and that we would get a uniform application of criteria to these concepts.
Clint. That's generally how the pricing for these has, has come about. For all of the elementary options, for every sing, virtually every single population increase that has been considered for all of the creative program for what I believe to be in the building, so today, Tim was kinda, Tim was questioning, he's like, that's, that's quite a bit of square footage if you're adding on that building, and I said, well, we're adding six classrooms of music, and then we went through it, and he was like, yeah, that's what we believe for, and so, yeah, we have all of that background information in terms of what is required for the additions for, for virtually every, I think almost every option, maybe as one or two of the, two of the tracks. And then, yes, Myron takes, we've done praise of many schools recently, and Myron, and they're taking their cost data based on typical school or built recently, and applying that as on a square footage basis right now, yes.
So we have that number that can be made available at some point in time.
Yeah, it's around two hundred dollars a square foot.
I guess at this point, I, I think the, the budget obviously has to inform the decision, but I, I think we have to come to an agreement on what the option is before we start to whittle away at how we're building that option. Cause this is kind of, and I think it's a great topic, and it's very applicable, and we'll work on it, but I think right now we're costing something, we have no idea what, you know, what means, we need to kind of keep moving forward, so I.
Well, that's a guess.
But you've done that. You, I mean, you've put costs on it.
Yes, yes.
But because he knows the concepts.
And we have no, we have no idea what that is though, like the twenty million deal on concept three E, twenty millions to West Edition, what is that, you know? So, we got a number, but we don't know what it is, what the building is that you're doing. So, I'm, I mean, it's just something we need to.
I had another question, when you're talking renovations here to figure the cost, are you renovating according to what the CISA ten report said, or are we bringing these schools up to what would be equivalent to a new school today, are we going in and gutting some of this to make the classroom sizes appropriate?
We've used a combination of the CISA and the Ferguson report for the building systems within the building, and then we just kind of approximated it, you know, wooden walls and stuff within a small portion of each of the buildings, just to, you know, and that there's probably some minor modifications there within each of the buildings. But yes, to your point, it's more along the lines of the CISA report as well.
Stick right out to the standards of schools sixty years ago.
Again, it's, it's the CISA report.
Okay.
Okay, I remind everyone, we do have a motion on the floor.
I have a question about the motion. My, my question is, do you have concerns that, let's say, we get these numbers for less expensive buildings, I was gonna say cheap, I said less expensive building. And, and let's say it turns out to be less expensive for the construction, but that these numbers do not include all the other things we're talking about, the, the quicker wear and tear, meaning that they're gonna, things are gonna have to be replaced sooner, just the, the, the daily work that might have to be done on those things. The public sees these numbers and they say, oh my God, why aren't you going for this? And then they, we say, well, hang on a second, you're not taking into consideration X, Y, Z, but we know what the public's like, and a lot of times, they see the first impression and they say, no, 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 I'm not going for anything more than twenty-five or ten million dollars, because that is what that says. So I guess that, that kind of concerns me, where if they see that, and then they, they think, this is so low, and then, and now you're trying to ask for something that's like twenty-five, thirty million, forget it. Do you have a concern about that?
It's a very reasonable concern.
So I mean, if they come back with these numbers.
They might look at that anyway.
Huh?
They might look at that anyway.
But not if they don't have the information, if we don't ask them to go get it?
That's very true. I guess I'm just.
They're not gonna sit here and listen to the conversation that we just had about, think about all these other things that, that go, come into play when you're looking at building with less expensive materials. So I'm concerned that then there will be a backlash on it, and maybe I'm thinking, maybe this is way out, way out in left field, but it just kind of popped in my head.
No, I think it's something that's down the road a bit, however, and it's something where you just have to be prepared to explain what choice you've made and why you made it, and that would be in the context of the cost.
We're a community that appreciates looking down the road.
And, you know, it, it may not convince a lot of people, and it may not convince enough people, but it's the best you can do.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second tomorrow. Are we ready to go on? The motion, one more time, is that, it was made by Dr. McKenna, seconded by Mrs. Mead, that we request Myron Bray to review the cost for intermediate type building concepts. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Yes.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Sorry, buddy.
The motion is defeated. And that being said, have we plugged this horse in a horse's mouth? So, everything being said as it is, and the way it's spelled out, it appears that we have taken the position that we will eliminate closing all rural and city elementary schools. The second one is. Sixth grade. Sixth grade into the high school, thank you. And that the motion for the grade configurations was defeated, and that we eliminate any option that has unequal transitions for elementary schools except for charter and innovative schools has passed, and the motion for Bray to review the intermediate type building concepts was defeated, so I think we have given Myron and Bray and administration our opinion of which direction we are ready to go come Thursday night for the open forum at the ball.
Indeed, you have, I do.
Alrighty, kids. That being said, on item C, board action, October public forums.
Can I say one other thing?
You may say one other thing, sir.
The group of district administrators and Myron Bray will be meeting at ten o'clock Tuesday morning, October sixth, in the central office. If there is no more than three or four board members who wish to attend, you will be invited.
Everybody got that done?
No.
That was at the district.
District office.
Is that a good time to have a forum? It might need a bigger room, Don.
We will, we'll probably wind up meeting in the basement.
I'm sorry, what was it?
Well, you can go down to the dungeon.
It was ten o'clock October sixth, correct?
Yes. No, I'm talking to the other dungeon, where all the old phone connections are.
So is that, are you suggesting that's a good night to hold another forum?
No, not necessarily, I'm just saying that's our next meeting, we meet every other Tuesday.
So then we would like to consider the idea of scheduling a forum in October where we can come back after our, get together on Thursday night where we really are gonna probably get hammering down on some things and get more community input as to what direction the community feels. We could have another forum where we potentially will have things pared down to a little further than what they are now.
So we should probably have that after the call meeting.
I would think it would be after that, yeah.
I, I think that October forum, I think.
Cause that would also, the one in October, would we then give school perceptions then to?
School perceptions is planning to start working on the survey instrument itself, no later than October twelfth.
Twentieth. Tuesday the twentieth?
For a public forum?
For, right, cause it would be after the call meeting night, cause then we can, you know, maybe, maybe we can discuss, discuss, you know, how it happens at the forum, so.
Yeah. Tuesday the twentieth would be our next meeting with Myron Bray, and so it might make some sense to do one that night.
I don't like doing it in the United States.
I don't think we should do one we did with today, which is to have him here at ten o'clock this morning, and now he's still there at eleven o'clock at night. o'clock this morning, and now he's still there at 11 o'clock at night. I think we probably want to move that, that group meeting to later in the afternoon, so that folks from Myron Bray can come a little later, so.
Well, what is your pleasure, folks?
Well, Pat made a good point, that if you guys are meeting on the same day that we have a forum, we're not going to get the information till that day of whatever, right? I mean, is there, maybe we want some time to get the information and then absorb it before we have the, the forum?
Thursday, the 22nd?
I prefer to avoid Thursdays, okay? Thursday nights.
Well, will that, will that really be a big one? Because after, we'll have the, the committee as a whole meeting the week before to discuss everything that happens at this, this open forum Thursday, and so it would just be, you know, because we, we give general directions, you know, we'd refine it down more on that committee as a whole meeting for that Tuesday, even though they met that same day. We should have, I think after this open forum, we'd have to refine it down a little more.
I, I'd prefer that Myron Bray not meet, I mean, that you guys don't necessarily meet up the night of forums, just because we don't get information, and it really is upsetting to, like, have contradictory things, or, you know, you don't think, I mean, that's what happened the last time, I mean, that's what led to all of this.
All right, and what about Wednesday, the 21st?
Is that enough time to get the information?
We have a community relations meeting on 21st.
Can Myron Bray meet with you guys the week before, the Tuesday before, is that, I'm not following the dates very well.
Will he meet on the 13th?
Yeah, on that Tuesday, and then there's a week to talk about things, and then we can have it on that Tuesday.
Here's, here's the kicker to all that, if they are currently meeting every two weeks, they're already meeting on the 6th.
Yeah, but what we want to have our?
The 13th is, oh, that is regional.
And what we want to have our COW, our community as a whole, meeting before they met with them again?
Because we've got the 14th, we've got policy committee meeting at 7, we got committee as a whole meeting at 7:30 on the 14th.
And the 13th, you're, you're?
13th is regional meeting for the school board association.
I have a problem with the way communication comes down on those days when Myron Bray's meeting and we have a forum. If other people don't, then we can do it those days, but that, that really felt problematic to me, the past, you know, this passport, I was upset, Jim was upset, I mean, people were pretty annoyed by how that went down, process-wise, it was upsetting, you know, at the, at the communication meeting. People didn't seem happy about it, I mean, I wasn't either.
The main reason they're doing that is to save Bray time, but is that not important anymore?
Well, I mean, let's face it, we are not Myron's and Bray's only clients, and their folks do have calendars pretty well set, and things that they're doing already, and I think they have to be a little respectful of that. It's certainly possible for us to do the minutes of the meeting immediately at the end of the meeting before we adjourn, so we can send them out electronically to everybody right away.
And how long are those meetings usually lasting?
Two, two and a half hours.
I mean, if we could, I suppose if, if I could at least have them, you know, if we knew we were going to get them like at 2 o'clock, I could live with that.
Why can't they meet on Monday of that week? I mean, I know that they've got schedules, I mean, just not the same exact day, that's all I'm saying, is that if we have a forum, it just seems to be problematic, but if, if everyone feels that it's not, then I would be quiet.
The only issue is to find the date in October, that's the problem.
Well, for Myron Bray, they can set up a scheduling time, and we, can we pick the date, when we go say the 13th?
Would the possibility exist for that particular week, Roger? That rather than meeting with Myron Bray on a Tuesday, you meet with them on a Monday, and then we have the forum on a Tuesday? Clint, could that work for you?
Well, the morning of like Thursday, the 15th, that way we have, we're getting a little bit forward, we could get you the information ample time. The concern with it would be Monday is that we're at, we're up here on Monday, and then we're up back up here again on Tuesday.
So, you space it out a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely.
If that would work for you, Clint, and if you guys could make that a combination, nice.
Thursday, the 15th is fine, we're still looking at the 20th for the forum?
Yes.
Yeah.
Clint, thank you for the compromise.
Thank you to administration. I, I'm assuming we're still going to think of 10 a.m., Clint, is that right? Okay, on the 15th, okay.
And then the 20th, would that start at 7?
Yes.
And what kind of a forum would it be? What kind of format?
I think probably open forum, like Thursday night will be.
Okay.
Would be my suggestion.
I, I think that sounds good.
Yeah, we'll do it at the ball again.
We'll verify with administration here that it's available. Okay. And I think as far as setting one up for November, early December, I think we'll wait till I?
I'm sorry, say again.
For the forum in November or December, I think we can wait till?
Wait till October.
October, maybe we can get those pushed out. Okay, then we, we've got that one set. Thank you, everyone. Budget update.
I don't have a lot to add, unfortunately.
Unfortunately?
Bobby's been working really hard on open enrollment, but as students open enroll to virtual schools, the virtual schools aren't responding whether or not we, so we've got students that are normal attendees that have enrolled to the virtual schools, Bobby's been waiting since Friday to get confirmation that they are in fact enrolled. So, we have 15 students that we can't get a handle on, whether they're, they're ours or not ours, or exactly where they're at yet, so our students that are in, in classroom seats, that, that third Friday number is about where we expected. The open enrollment numbers in, I think Bobby, if I remember, it's 33 students in. We've got 97 students going out, 85 of those students have been accounted for, but we really need that confirmation on the 15th, 15 students, before we can figure out what our revenue numbers will be for the revenue limit calculation. And then we still haven't got the equalization, any tighter number than what I presented to the board. So, there's some things that are still a little bit loose. October 1 will be a little tightening day for us, where we'll get the, we'll get the equalization, equalized value for the district, and then by then, we should have solid enrollment numbers, and we'll get that number tightened up. So, it's about where we expect it to be, but we don't have?
It's still the work in progress. Thank you, Tim. Clint? We've kept you here long enough, Clint, thank you, thank you for sticking around as long as I do, appreciate it.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, item E, we have one donation from Ron and Nancy Blood in the amount of $500 for the sound system at the Ball Theater. I don't think anybody's going to object to accepting that.
So, being a drama club, oh boy, being a drama club treasurer, I thank you, and I would really hope that you all accept that, because, boy.
Oh, gosh, we need it. I'm not seeing that being anything other than thanking the Bloods for their generosity. Okay, done deal. Item seven, personnel, thankfully, we have no resignations or retirements, and we have one new hire, Jennifer Jennings as a literacy coach.
I move the board approve the hiring of Jennifer Jennings as an instructional coach.
Well?
That's how the county board goes.
I know, the motion by Mr. Mary, the second by Mr. Jensen, to approve the hiring of Jennifer Jennings as an instructional coach. Any questions? Hearing none, call vote.
Ginny Long?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
James Schultz?
Yes.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
Tarek Isla?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Kat Jensen?
Yes, ma'am.
Mike Foley?
Yes.
Okay, moves us to item eight, be looking for a motion to adjourn into closed session. Okay, motion by Ms. Long, second by Mr. Mary, that board go into closed session. Bobby, you have a call vote, please.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jessica Mead? James Schultz?
Yes.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
Tarek Isla?
Fine.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Kat Jensen?
Yes.
Ginny Long? Mike Foley?
Yes.